Take a moment. And make sure that we can be heard in the Zoom webinar. Kim, are you able to hear us?
Yep, here you go, loud and clear.
Okay, so, Kim, are you able to hear us? In the webinar?
Yes, I can hear you.
Hello? Can you hear me now, Sam?
You ready?
I almost texted you certain parts just to go, what the hell?
Well, we can discuss that.
Yeah, let's go.
Going up? Okay, good morning, and thank you to our, to all the people out here in the chambers today. We're gonna start our May 2nd meeting of the Lake County Board of Supervisors. What's that? Okay, hold on.
Recording in progress.
Sam, did we ever get anything from Jake on Live Manager?
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
The Granicus server?
Uh, I'll have to check with Jake. I thought he got back to you.
We're definitely not live on Granicus.
Okay, are, do we have the Granicus? Are you able to get in? No?
I'm not a panelist either. There we go. Thank you, Jake, or Matthew, or whoever that was. Kim?
Okay, I think we're just waiting to make sure that Yohanna can get in.
Did he say it's working?
He said, yeah, it's, he rebooted it.
I just reloaded and I didn't see it.
Well, it won't even let me in to start.
Yeah, 5.2 says not available for video rather than in progress right now.
Can you tell Jake to resend me the address for Live Manager? And I'll see if I can redo the whole app.
Okay, so I will just mute everything right now.
It's working? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready to begin.
Okay, now we are ready to begin our May 2nd meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. And I think we have a few moment of silence dedications. Wanna go first?
So I have one. Catherine Anne Gomez, known as Auntie Cat and Supi from Big Valley. I'll read off of what I have here. Catherine Gomez was born June 27, 1948, in San Jose, California. She was a tribal elder of Big Valley Rancho Ria Band of Pomo Indians in Lakeport. She was a very strong, loving, and caring person, full of joy and always fun to be around. She will tell you like it is no matter what. She fought very strong during her 74 years of life and never gave up. She always had faith and did everything with good heart. She always opened her doors to the family and helped if she could. Catherine enjoyed family time, loved her puzzles, telling stories, house TV shows, comedy, movies, shopping. She always enjoyed good music, dancing, and the color purple. Always making sure she was matching when she got dressed for the day. She will truly be missed. She passed April 23, 2023, predeceased by her parents Mitchell Gomez and Mildred Berriessa, her siblings Ona, Zelda, Casey, Manuel, Arnie, and Norma. She is survived by her sister Jane Sunnfeld, godson Billy Fred, godmother Jojo, and countless nieces, nephews, and grandchildren, family and friends who loved and cared for her very much. We will all miss you so much, Auntie Cat, Supi, darling. Till we meet again, rest in peace. Traditional visitation at 585 Yellow Hammer Lane, Lakeport, California. And this already took place, obviously, but I just wanted to read off the obituary, so.
Thank you. And I'm gonna read the, what? Did you have another one?
Oh, no.
Okay. Alorna Mae Mayer, March 14, 1950 to April 7, 2023. Lori Mayer passed away at her home in Kelseyville after a courageous fight with cancer on April 7, 2023, with her husband of 47 years, Stephen son Keith by her side. Lori was born in Oakland, California, and grew up in Hayward. As a child, she knew she wanted to be a teacher and often played school with the neighborhood children. She graduated from Hayward High School in 1968. She worked with the Military Sea Lift Command in Alameda for a few years before going to Cal State Hayward to get her bachelor's degree. After graduation, she worked as a student teacher in Castro Valley while earning her full teaching credential. Lori and Steve moved to Lake County in 1982 for her first job as a fully-credentialed teacher. Once they arrived in Lake County, they never left, though she forever rooted for the Oakland A's. Lori taught 3rd grade for over 30 years at Kelseyville Primary and Riviera Elementary, focusing on hands-on science projects and interactive learning. Some of her proudest achievements as a teacher included initiating the science fair and her, with her colleagues at Kelseyville Primary, starting a recycling program at the school, and receiving the Teacher of the Year Award. When Lori wasn't teaching, she loved traveling around the Western United States and Canada. She enjoyed being out in nature and observing wildlife and was committed to environmental issues in her local community and around the planet. Anyone who met Lori knew that she loved all dogs, but wolves in particular. Some of her favorite spots included the Smith River, Fort Bragg, and always coming home to beloved Lake County. She is preceded in death by her father Marvin Babe Lewis, mother Ruth Lewis, brother Donnie Lewis, and brother-in-law Mike Mayer. She is survived by her husband Stephen Mayer, sister Nancy Williams, son Keith Mayer, Michelle Stevens, and brother-in-law John Mayer, and Kevin Mayer. She will be missed by her numerous nieces and nephews and all of the students she taught through the years. In lieu of flowers, please donate to the Nature Conservancy in California or your local animal shelter. Care entrusted to the Chapel of the Lakes Mortuary. Chief Duncan, will you lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have an extra item to consider.
Right. And so bringing this forward, it's a consideration of a letter to Kearns &amp; West regarding the Russian River Water Forum. And the reason why I want to bring it forward is that they finalize and announce the details probably for next Tuesday, so if I bring it forward then, we won't be able to get the letter to request that Lake Pillsbury Alliance be their own entity instead of our alternate. It doesn't make sense to list them as an alternate, so just wanted to consider that.
Okay. Supervisor Spatier?
Due to the fact that there's a need to take action before the next agenda and that this came up after the posting of our current agenda, I move to approve this as an extra item.
Second.
Okay, let me see if there's any public input before we have action. I'm not seeing any. Okay. I'll bring it back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will get to the extra item 4.1 a little bit later. Our next item is to approve the consent agenda. And Supervisor Spatier?
I would like to pull two items for further discussion, 5.6 and 5.8.
Okay, is there anyone from the public who wishes to pull items? Come on up to the microphone.
I already told her.
Yeah, you need to come up to the microphone.
So I was studying the agenda yesterday.
Your name, please.
Joan Moss. And I believe that the proclamation about the hitch, which is 5.3, needs to be pulled. I don't think it's an uncontroversial item. I have some questions. 5.1.
So every month we renew these, and so you have a problem with renewing them? Is that the issue?
I have a number of items I wanna pull. I wanna tell you what they are.
Okay.
5.3. 5.1. 5.8, 5.9, and then 5.15.
Okay. Any other public input? I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Let me see if I can remember this. Madam Chair, I move to approve 5.2, 5.4, 5.7. 5, I don't think was pulled.
Oh, right.
5.7, 5.9.
No, 10 through 14.
And 10 through 14. And 5.16 and 17, I don't think were pulled either.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll come back to those pulled items a little bit later.
And if it's possible to do 5.6 before the presentation?
Yes, we will do that before the presentation.
Thank you.
Our 6.1, item 902, public input. Do we have anyone in the chambers who wishes to come up and give public input? Come on up. You can state your name and have three minutes.
Good morning, Board of, is this on?
Yeah.
Cool. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for having me. My name is Marina Delajanos, and I serve as the Deputy Water Resources Director for the Lake County Watershed Protection District. I'm joined by William Fox, Water Resources Program Coordinator, and Scott DeLeon, Public Works and Water Resources Director. I'm here to give a quick update and a happy announcement, sharing that the California Department of Water Resources approved our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan on April 27. I have come to the board plenty of times to talk about groundwater and how we are going to and successfully implementing sustainable groundwater management in our Big Valley Basin. So this is very exciting news. As we know, our county, along with our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee, worked very, very hard in a little over 12 months to develop our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan. And the California Department of Water Resources, who is tasked with implementing the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, took a little over two years to review the plan and provided the announcement. I'm not gonna bore you all with exciting details today, but if you are interested in following along with the implementation of our Big Valley Groundwater Basin, please feel free to join us on our May 26 Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee, where we're gonna talk about the continued efforts and the successful implementation of our Big Valley GSP. So I just wanted to make that announcement public and then give a lot of kudos and appreciation to our advisory committee, the Big Valley GSA, and the Big Valley community to help make this possible. So, fun news.
Thank you. Congratulations and well done.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Any other public input? Okay. 6.2? Oh, okay, come on up to the microphone.
Good morning, my name is Greg Bianchini. I live on 13th Avenue in Lucerne. And my issue today is with the Any Positive Change Needle Exchange Program that is set up on our street. And now the Needle Exchange Program is now moved directly right outside of the Tower Mart gas station and store, I mean literally 10, 12 feet away from the store in the street. And it's right outside of the store. And it's not safe for the kids that use this store and live on this street. And I'd like to see if she could move to the beginning of town where Highway 20 and Foothill is. That's the farthest away from the school. I think that's the only safe spot for her to set up in Lucerne. And listen, I've been here 13 times now, and our kids, our children should come first. They're our future. They don't need to see this truck with banners on the side of the truck that says, "No War on Drugs and Fix with Friends." The truck is, it's not good for the kids. It's not, it's not fair for the people that live in Lucerne. It's not safe, it's not fair, it's not okay for the kids in Lucerne, it's not okay for the parents, it's not okay for the elderly, it's not okay for the school, and it's not okay for our community. And all I'm asking her to do is just move to a safe spot where the children don't have to see this truck with the doors wide open and her passing out free drug paraphernalia. I know how this, these drugs start. I started at a very young age, and I just, I just don't wanna see our kids going in that direction. They have no future at all coming up to this, to this, this truck. And if she could just move to a safe area, that's all, that's all we're asking. And I think that's reasonable. And thank you for listening to me today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick, Greg, and I gave Greg an update about the public health in the MOU earlier, so it's still taking some time, but we did talk before as well, so.
Well, she's been already set up for about, almost a year and a half, almost a year and a half now on 13th Street, so it's, it's time to move.
Okay, any last public comment? Our 6.2 item, 9:03 a.m., Pet of the Week. And we have somebody with us today.
Good morning. My name's Officer Downhour. I'm with Lake County Animal Care and Control. With me this morning is our newest ACO, Officer Guard, as well as Pluto. Pluto is our Pet of the Week. Pluto is a two-year-old hound mix. He is currently 60 pounds, and he might go up a little bit, but not by much. Pluto is currently one of our tester dogs. What that means is that he gets along with everybody so well that we use him to test other dogs with. We test, we actually used him this morning to test one of our other dogs that he just paid him no mind. It was absolutely great. Pluto, I think, would do really well in any home. He gets along with everybody, and he really likes the Buckets. Pluto is currently in kennel 20 at Lake County Animal Care and Control. We're located at 4949 Hellbush Drive, right behind the county jail. If you have any questions or would like to come and meet Pluto, please either come and see us or call us at 707-263-0278. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you. He is the sweetest boy. He is. With all these people in this room, Pluto should find a home for sure. Thank you so much. See you next week. Okay, so we will take up 5.6 before we move on to 6.3. Supervisor Spatier?
Do you wanna read it?
Oh, sure. 5.6 is Adopt Proclamation Recognizing May 5, 2023 as the Lake County Day of Awareness for Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and People. Supervisor Spatier?
So I pulled this not to derail the proclamation. I'm looking forward to this and the presentation. I know that we also passed a resolution, I guess, or a policy for putting up flags. I see here that there's a lot of T-shirts being handed out, and there's obviously a symbol that comes along with this proclamation. And not sure, because this was the action portion. The other one is the presentation portion, so this is why I pulled this one. Wondering if there's a possibility of looking to involve a flag portion of this proclamation so that the community can see it, not just hear it inside this board chamber and seeing how the board felt about that potential addition. I don't have a flag, but seeing the fact that lots of T-shirts were handed out today, I'm thinking there must be a flag somewhere. Maybe we can look to get one. Not sure if Supervisor Crandall can do that, but that's what I wanted to bring up, is I feel we have an opportunity to do more than just speak about it, that we can really show the public. And to me, this is one of those, in my opinion, non-controversial things that we can put up that doesn't take a side on anything. It just shows what our support is and what we're proclaiming at this time. So just kinda wanted to have that conversation before the presentation.
Supervisor Crandall?
Right, and I'm seeing Katie saying yes. Did you wanna come up and?
Good morning, my name is Katie Ray. I am the new manager for our Victim Services Department for Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians, and I will order a flag or have one made. The symbol is the hand, and the hand is to indicate that they are no longer able to speak for themselves, and we are here to speak for them.
Thank you.
So we can do that.
I'm looking at County Council. Is this something that we can add to today's action?
Procedurally, yes, as a pulled item under the, that was on the consent agenda. And I just to make sure, and I think, I believe there was a, there is a display of flags policy in place. That's what I checked on, so as long as it's consistent with that, yes.
So add the request?
It could.
Or add the action?
Action could be given by Direction of Staff or so into policy.
Okay.
As one option.
Who wants to do this?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to implement the policy to allow for a flag for murdered and missing indigenous peoples.
For the month of May?
For the month of May.
And adopt the proclamation?
Oh, right, and adopt the proclamation. Forgot all about that.
Second.
Did you have something to add?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. And we will now go to our 6.3, 9:04 a.m. Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing May 5, 2023 as Lake County Day of Awareness for Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and People. Supervisor Crandall?
Mo, did you wanna come up with me?
Yeah.
Sure.
And so for this proclamation, anybody that's here for this event should come up with us and stand while I read the proclamation. Yeah. Do our best fit, right? You should be. All right. All right. So I'll read this proclamation, recognizing May 5, 2023 as the Lake County Day of Awareness for Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Peoples Day, and Week, of course. Just wanted to highlight that Katie and Patty had reached out to me about doing this proclamation. It's, I wanna say at least three or four years now it's been, it's been an initiative. More and more, as well with social media and news, all of that, we've been finding that more and more, and it's always been something that's on Indian country where we're missing and murdered indigenous peoples have never been found or have been found and later on down the line, they were murdered or something of the like. And so this initiative here is to recognize, and of course, they explained the hand over the mouth. There's been some events here in Lake County that's, that's hurt our Native American community, and it's been very painful for a lot of people because even though we have seven tribes, a lot of us are connected, whether it be through marriage relationships, blood relationships, all of that. So it hurts in general. And so I'm really glad that we can read this proclamation. I'm glad there's an initiative for this to recognize. And so I'll go ahead and start with, whereas according to the National Crime Justice Training Center, missing and murdered Native women are two and a half times more likely to experience violent crimes and two times more likely to experience rape or sexual assault crimes in their lifetime and make up 40% of victims of sex trafficking. And whereas, according to the National Criminal Justice Training Center, 1.5 million American Indian Alaskan Native women, more than four fifths of them have already experienced violence in their lifetime and homicide is the third-leading cause of death among 10 to 24-year-olds and the fifth-leading cause of death among 25 to 34-year-olds. And whereas, the National Crime Information Center Missing and Unidentified Persons Statistics from 2022 accounted for 5,487 indigenous missing persons incidents, 4,251 of those under the age of 20, 1,236 over the age of 21, and at the end of 2022, 1,593 of the cases were still open. And whereas, in 2020, Savannah's Act and the Not Invisible Act were signed into federal law to address a lack of data and to improve law enforcement coordination to address the number of missing and murdered indigenous women and people. And whereas, the area known as Lake County has been developed upon the ancestral homelands of the indigenous peoples who have continuously inhabited, utilized, and stewarded the land since time immemorial and is also the home to seven federally recognized tribes, the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, the Elam Indian Colony, the Habemotolo Pomo of Upper Lake, the Coy Nation of Northern California, the Middletown Rancho Ria of Pomo Indians of California, the Robinson Rancho Ria of Pomo Indians, and the Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians. And whereas, the County of Lake is committed to commemorating the lives of missing and murdered indigenous people whose cases are documented and undocumented in public records. murdered indigenous people whose cases are documented and undocumented in public records and the media and demonstrate solidarity with the families of victims in light of these tragedies and recognizes there is more work to be done to address this nationwide crisis. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake hereby proclaims May 2nd, 2023 as Lake County Day of Awareness for Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and People, passed and adopted this second day of May, 2023, signed Chair of the Board of Supervisors Jessica Paeska. Does anyone want to speak on this?
Um, good morning, everyone. I just want to say, um, thank you to, um, Supervisor Crandall and for everyone that's here, um, for this day, you know? It's important to me because I was named after my aunt and she was a, she was a murdered indigenous woman and, you know, um, in our family, I'm here with my sister as well. We've had, uh, my, her grandfather and, um, my cousin is still missing. So, um, it's really important that we address, address this and, you know, this is a, I just appreciate that this is being done because, uh, sorry. I just appreciate it. It's just been a long time coming and I think the more that we bring awareness to this issue, the more that's going to be done and the more that our people are going to be treated fairly. And, um, and it takes, uh, the supervisors, you know, as well. I want to thank you all for, um, your commitment to this as well and, um, yeah, so thank you.
Mo, did you want to say something? Yeah. Okay, okay.
I want to say thank you, uh, on the behalf of my family. Um, I'm from Round Valley and Round Valley has a growing number of missing and/or murdered individuals. Um, I've had my cousin Mike Pena murdered, my cousin Kenny Whipple murdered, my cousin Nick Whipple was murdered, my cousin Ruby Montalago was murdered, my cousin Khadija Britton is missing, um, my uncle Leroy Russ was murdered, and the list goes on. Um, so this is very near and dear to me and I work for not only Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians for our victim services, but I also work for Intertribal Council of California for our domestic violence for Lake County. So when we have something like this, to see a room full of people that I know this means a lot to them too, because it also touches them either immediately within their family or close to them, um, it's something that's very important. And I want to thank, uh, everyone who came. Shane, thank you for driving from LA, uh, to be here with us and the ladies from Chico and, um, just know that we love you all. Thank you.
All right. Anyone from this side? Mo?
Yeah. Boy, powerful room. That's all I can say. So, um, I know there are some other events. I want to talk about those. I think there is a vigil, I think, at the State Capitol this week, put on by James Ramos. If I'm right, I think it's tomorrow night. I think it starts at 6:30. Um, you know, uh, the most important thing, and I think when James sent out that invitation and James Ramos, the only tribal assembly member in the history of California, which is, you know, we got to get out there and support him getting this message out. So, um, going to try and make that tomorrow. And then also here locally, Lake County Tribal Health is doing something locally on Friday. I don't know if we have anyone from Tribal Health here. Anybody who needs to speak up? What time does that event start?
Starts at, uh, 2:00, ends at 7:00 o'clock.
2:00 to 7:00 on Friday. So, uh, the representation is there and as it was said today, this trauma continues today. We need to continue to bring awareness to it and we as tribal people are resilient and we're here. And that's the message we always need to bring because there are a lot of conversations happening in this world, but the indigenous people that inhabited this country and these lands, um, we're here. That's all I have to say. We're here. Thank you for all being here.
All right. All right.
I just want to thank everybody for being here, supporting this. I appreciate it. It means a lot to me.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this? All right. Thank you all for coming on this, uh, wonderful day and, uh, it looks like Sam wants to get a, a picture.
Back here.
Yeah. All right. So if you're here for this, let's get in the picture.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. Bye-bye. Did you see that?
You don't know what happens next.
Thank you for bringing that.
Yeah.
That was one of the most powerful proclamations we've had together.
Thank you.
I really want to thank everybody that came today as all making their way out. Thank you for coming.
And I just wanted to, I know that they gave, hello. I know they, they, uh, mentioned Shane Grammer and if, uh, those who don't know, uh, he helped paint the mural in Upper Lake of our relative Vanessa Nico. And, uh, and so, um, he does a lot of these murals. We did one in, uh, Ukiah for Khadija Britton. And so, uh, you know, that's, that's who Shane is. That's why he came from LA because he does a lot of this work and so it's appreciative on Indian country, Shane, so.
Yeah, thank you. Love you guys.
Thank you. And, um, I just, I know everyone's left, but I'll open it up for public input if there was someone else in the Zoom room or in the chambers that wanted to speak. Not seeing any. Our next item, 6.4, 9:05 a.m., Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of May 2023 as National Foster Care Awareness Month. And we have Supervisor Sabatier.
Anybody here that wants to come up for this proclamation? In support of our foster youth?
Actually, all foster. Foster pay.
All, all fosters.
Volunteers.
Yes.
The whole damn thing.
Supporting foster care.
Exactly. Thank you.
I said the wrong word. So, a- as, as we're coming up, uh, here, um, I just want to say that our children more than anything need a stable environment, a supportive environment, um, and, and for many reasons, uh, some of our children, uh, don't have those resources available to them at all times. Uh, the support that comes with the nonprofits that work to provide those supports, uh, the parents that walk into these services and say, hey, I'd love to support a foster youth, uh, all of the above, um, are so necessary because just like anything else, they are a part of our community and we need to support every aspect of our communities to make sure that they can grow and prosper and have the same opportunities everyone else does. And so I, I do want to, uh, before I read the proclamation, uh, when I came here, I, um, was kind of handed over something that I've continued, uh, over the last couple of years on my own. Uh, Rob Brown used to do a, um, gifts for, uh, foster youth. I have been, uh, working to try to get that list from Social Services, uh, but I also get a list from, uh, Environmental Alternatives and try to work to see how we can make things, uh, happen for all of our foster children in the care system. Um, I just want to give a shout out to our staff. The support that comes when that happens is, I'm just going to use the word insane. Uh, I put out the list and less than 24 hours, that list is gone. Uh, the support is overwhelming. I have to say no to more people than I say yes to more, uh, because everyone is looking to support those youth and, and the support is incredible. It's absolutely, it's one of my favorite things that I do in the year. I'm trying to do more in the sense that Social Services has their separate program and we're really trying to combine it all. Uh, but the overwhelming feeling of emotions and just the support that I receive from our staff is something that I, I, I wish everyone could feel that that's what's in our communities and our staff is a perfect representation of what our communities are and who our communities are. So proclamation of Lake County proclaiming May as National Foster Care Month. Whereas Lake County Board of Supervisors recognizes the importance of providing children safe, healthy, and loving homes when they are unable to remain in the home of their biological family. And whereas there are more than 407,000 children in the United States in the foster care system. And whereas more than 60,000 children in California are in the foster care system. And whereas there are over 88 children, youth in the County of Lake, in the County of Lake, who are in the foster care system. And whereas to help these children have a healthy, loving, and stable home environment where they can thrive and feel connected to a community that cares for them and to support the resource families that provide these critical homes, the county is acknowledging National Foster Care Month to raise awareness about the need for more resource family homes in our county for local children and join other organizations to celebrate resource families in our community. And whereas this effort, along with similar celebrations in all 50 states, will offer children the chance to live with healthy, loving, and stable resource families when they cannot live with their birth families and encourage other dedicated individuals to make a powerful difference in the lives of a child through resource family care. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lake County Board of Supervisors is wholeheartedly proclaiming the month of May 2023 as National Foster Care Month in Lake County and in so doing urges all citizens to join in a national effort to raise awareness about the importance of foster care and the resource family care, passed and adopted the second day of May, 2023, and signed by our Chair Jessica Paeska. Would you like to say a word?
I have notes. So thank you Supervisor. Uh, my name is Mary Pagon and I'm a program manager at Lake County Child Welfare and we would like to thank foster parents, family members, community members, the tribal community, the many service providers in the community, volunteers, the judges and the attorneys, all the staff at Lake County Child Welfare and the Department of Social Services and the Board of Supervisors for all your hard work and support for the children of our community. You are truly valued and appreciated. It's an old saying, but it really does take a village. Here in Lake County, we are small but mighty. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let me give this to you. And one last comment. Uh, it would be, uh, bad for me not to recognize our, also our past supervisor. Supervisor Tina Scott was an excellent example for all families. Uh, she opened her house to many youth, uh, and helped out with so many, um, I think that she was a leading example of what can happen. Um, and I believe from talking to her that she was enjoying, uh, the relationships, enjoying the experience, uh, just like everything, it has its ups and downs, but I know that she always spoke highly of, of opening her house for that and so, uh, looking for more, uh, to come through.
Uh, my name is Lisa Hart. I'm the, um, foster youth coordinator for Lake County. Um, I work for Lake County Office of Education and I just wanted to invite all of you. We are having a former foster youth come from LA. His name is Dee Hankins and he's going to be speaking at the Lower Lake Gym, um, next Tuesday at 6 o'clock. Um, he's going to be talking about resiliency. You guys were talking about that earlier today. We all live with trauma. We obviously live here in Lake County. We live with trauma. We have fires. So he's going to be speaking, um, about resiliency and it's going to be a powerful, um, speak, he is a powerful speaker and, um, I encourage you guys come and listen to him. Um, I've seen him speak twice and he is an incredible speaker. So please come and, um, and just listen to him because he's, he's great. 6 o'clock, Lower Lake Gym. Yes.
Thank you for that. We ready for a picture?
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, our next item, 6.6, 9:07 a.m., Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Week of May 1st through 7th, 2023 as Wildfire Preparedness Week. Vice Chair Simon.
Yeah. Are you going to come up too? Good morning. So we're here for the proclamation today for, uh, designating the week of May 1st through the 7th, 2023, Wildfire Preparedness Week. A little funny, we're talking about that and we got rain coming down out there, but that is just a sign too, that the grass will be grown, even though we just cut it, it'll be coming back up, so. Whereas wildfire significantly impacts Lake County's environmental, economic, and social well-being and can occur during any month. And whereas residents of Lake County's fire-prone communities must accept responsibility for living in high fires and hazard areas. And whereas residents, property owners, utility providers, evacuation corridor owners, and essential service providers must prepare to survive wildfire by ensuring proper management of vegetation and debris surrounding their locations and must stay continuously vigilant throughout the year. And whereas residents, citizens, and guests should take protective actions immediately during a wildfire or any other emergency to keep themselves safe. Whereas Zone Zero is the amber-resistant zone which extends five feet from buildings as, and has been proven by science to be the most important of all defensible space zones and is designated to keep fire or ambers from igniting materials that can spread fire to your home. And whereas using landscape, hardscape materials and landscaping, removing all dead or dying vegetation, removing all branches within 10 feet of any chimney or stovepipe outlet, limiting combustible items on top of decks, relocating firewood and lumber to Zone Two, and replacing combustible fencing attached to the home with non-combustible alternatives are some examples of clearing Zone Zero. And whereas residents and property owners are requested to create 100 feet of dispensable space, reduce fuels, have their address clearly posted, have a wildfire ready, set, go plan, prepare for extended periods without electricity. And whereas utility providers, phone, cable- And whereas utility providers, phone, cable, fiber, electrical, are requested to create defensible space and remove all fuels within 100 feet of infrastructure stations, transmission lines, earth to sky, and have their address clearly posted. Whereas evacuation and roadway corridor owners, federal, state, county, cities, and private are requested to create defensible space, lim up ladder fuels 10 feet, reduce and or remove all fuels within 100 feet of roadways. And whereas essential services providers, hospital, medical plan, medical clinics, fire stations, police stations, government facilities, senior centers, care and shelter locations are requested to create defensible space and reduce and or remove all fuels within 100 feet of their infrastructure, have their address clearly posted, and be prepared for extended periods without electricity. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Lake County Board of Supervisors in partnership with the Lake County Fire Chiefs Association and the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority supports the week of May 1st through the 7th of 2023 as Lake County Wildfire Preparedness Week. What you do makes a difference. Wildfires knows, wildfire knows no season. Passed and adopted this second day of May 2023 and signed by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Jessica Peiska.
Turn it over to you Chief.
Absolutely. So Paul Duncan, Chief of North Division Operations for Cal Fire and Assistant Chief for South Lake County Fire Protection District, your actions are important. So those of the public and those that are listening, your defensible space creation and also obeying orders for evacuations are critical for safety in times of fire. There's been some discussion about folks not wanting to evacuate when they're asked. This is not about us wanting you out of your house. We want you safe and we can't do that if you're inside the fire zone, inside your structure. So thank you for that and thank you for the proclamation. Everybody have a safe fire season.
Almost took out the American flag. It's like a party foul.
Did I miss 6.5? Oh, I thought, oh, oops. Jumped ahead, sorry, I missed 6.5. I thought it was after. Lot going on this morning. So our 9:06 a.m. Item, Presentation of Proclamation Designating May 1st through 7th, 2023 as Elks Youth Week in Lake County. Supervisor Green.
I see some Elks. Elk singular, elk plural. Help me out. It says Elks. I'm going to go with Elks.
Elk Lodge, number 2704.
Does that make up mooses? I don't know.
No, no, no.
No, no, we're not going down that road. That would be wrong. We're here today to do a proclamation designating May 1 through 7th, 2023 as Elks Youth Week in Lake County. Put my glasses on my head, it'll probably help if I put them on. Whereas, the benevolent and protective Order of Elks has designated May 1 through 7th, 2023 as Elks Youth Week to honor America's junior citizens for their accomplishments and to give fitting recognition of their services to community, state, and nation. And whereas Lakeport Elk's Lodge, number 2704, will sponsor an observance during this week in tribute to the junior citizens of this community. And whereas, no event could be more deserving of our support and participation than one dedicated to these young people who represent the nation's greatest resource and who in the years ahead will assume the responsibility for the advancement of our free society. And whereas our youth need the guidance, inspiration, and encouragement which only we can give in cooperation with other local agencies and partners in order to help develop those qualities of character essential for future leadership roles in our nation and communities. And whereas, to achieve this worthy objective, we should demonstrate our partnership with youth, our understanding of their hopes and aspirations, and a sincere willingness to help prepare them in every way for the responsibilities and opportunities of citizenship. And whereas, Lakeport Elk's Lodge, number 2704, is giving $11,000 total in scholarships to 11 outstanding seniors from Lake County's three public high schools this year. And whereas, the Elks Drug Awareness Program has been recognized as the largest all-volunteer drug awareness program in the United States. Elks believe that in order to ensure a bright future for our country, it is essential that our children be raised in a drug-free environment. And whereas, Lakeport Elk's Lodge, 2704, participates in the Lake County Sheriff's Activities League, which builds relationships between law enforcement and local youth through sporting activities. Now therefore be it resolved, the Lake County Board of Supervisors designates the week of May 1 through 7th, 2023 as Elks Youth Week in Lake County, passed and adopted this second day of May 2023 and signed by Jessica Peiska, Chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Morning, I'm Mike Beilenberg, President, equivalent of President of our Lodge this year. I'm with Pat Finley, who is President-elect basically this year. We have different titles officially, but this, and we're proud to represent the Lakeport Lodge. We're proud to have been able to present $11,500 in scholarships to local youth. We're proud we were able to acquire some grants from the national organization to support Upper Lake Senior Center and the North Shore Dive Team this year and other accomplishments that were mentioned in the proclamation. So thank you very much for your support.
I want to thank you again, in addition to everything the proclamation says, as we know coming out of COVID, a lot of our local civic organizations really struggled to get through that. It is so important that we rebuild all of our nonprofit organizations that are so important to supporting our youth and our community and glad to see Elks out there. Is there a website or regular meeting time you want to let people know about the Lodge?
Well, Elks, yes, elks.org, lakeportelks.org is the site. We meet 2nd and 4th Thursdays at 7:00. And if you're interested in becoming a member, let one of us know, call the Lodge and leave a message and we'll be glad to talk to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any public input on this item? I'm not seeing any and then we will go on.
Yes, I just wanted to say, I witnessed at the West Region Town Hall, they came and donated the funding they talked about to the Senior Center and it's good to see the action of taking care of seniors and youth. You know, we talk about it a lot, but the actions that you make are really noticed. So thank you.
Just come on up to the microphone and you can say your name and you'll have three minutes.
I'm Val Schweitzer, Elks. We also donated 1,650 pounds of food to our vets.
You can't hear me? Darn, most of the time. I'm Val and I just want to let you know through our veterans program, they coordinated 1,650 pounds of food to be delivered to the Lakeport Senior Center. And the previous month, in February, they did 1,000 pounds to Upper Lake. So just let you know, we have a variety of programs. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our 910 item, 6.7, consideration of a resolution amending the master fee schedule for departmental services rendered by the county. And we've got our admin coming up.
Good morning Board, Stephen Carter, Assistant County Administrative Officer. For your consideration today is the annual Master Fee Schedule update. It can be updated other times of the year, but this is the time for the main update. And the reason why it comes in early May is that certain community development department fees require 60 days to go active, to go into effect. So coming in early May makes it effective as early in July, July 1st as possible. So I'll just go right into the different changes proposed by departments. For the Administration Office, it's actually a county-wide fee increase. It's not really an increase, it's where the Auditor's Office notified us that we weren't charging the correct fee for return checks. We were charging 25, but it actually cost us 30. So a pretty basic change there. With the Ag and Weights and Measures Department, they are asking to remove a fee. Animal Control is adjusting a few fees here and there to major. Auditor's Office is also requesting to change some fees and within the Auditor's Office, it came to our attention through the Auditor, Genevieve, that there's a fee that has been missing for a long time actually, so we would like to add one to, it's not about proposals, my face. We would like to add one that is not actually currently on the board item. It is called Fish and Wildlife Notice of Exemption and it's a $50 fee. Auditor would like that to be added to what is currently here. And before I go any further, the main adjustments that are allowed are either via CPI, which this year for the Oakland, San Francisco Bay Area, from February to February is what we utilize, was 5.3%. So that is allowed within the ordinance that was approved by the Board. And also if there's a fee study, which is important for capturing all the fees related to a department's actual expense, not to make any kind of profit. So the next department is Behavioral Health, where I am the Interim Director. This one is quite a large increase overall and that is related to 100% to the state reform and the payment reform where they are taking into consideration finally our increases in pay and our actual expenditures to create the new fee structure and they look into that every couple of years. But if your Board would like a little more information on that, I do have Chrissy from Behavioral Health ready to explain.
Were you looking for questions during the presentation?
Yeah, it's, I don't see a reason to go through them all.
So for Behavioral Health, I know that I spoke with Interim Director Carter about the increases. I did get some information that from what I understand, there may not even be a need to put some of these items on our fee service because we're not selling it to the public. It's more of what's the reimbursement for the services that we submit over to the state? If you can please.
Correct. I would like Chrissy to come on and explain that a little better. Previously, we were required to post all of the fees whether we charge it to the public or claim it to the state.
And just as an example as to why I had this conversation, our outpatient drug-free services for non-perinatal per service showed that it was $33.90 and now it's being offered at $463.12. And so those huge jumps seemed glaringly obvious that I needed to ask some questions and I feel like I got some good answers, but I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware as to why those big jumps occurred as well.
That she was watching.
She just got promoted to panelist. There she is.
Good morning.
Good morning. Were you able to hear the question?
I was not. I was trying to get in and it was really running slow.
The question that I had was the general increases, for example, mental health services per minute from $3.57 to $9.31, or the outpatient drug-free services from $33.90 to $463. If you could provide an explanation as to what are the jumps and who exactly is paying for these services?
So prior to payment reform, we had to post our rates. So we'd always posted the lowest rates that we were billing up to the state and now we don't currently have to post those rates with payment reform. The dramatic increase for ODS was based off of, you know, the methodology that I had sent over to you that the state looked at. We internally always offer our clients a fee waiver form up on admission into our programs and also an undapt form. So we always based our rates for our clients off of their income.
Sliding scales sold.
Sliding scale if they don't have Medi-Cal or private insurance.
Okay. And again, these are the fees that are both reimbursed by the state and on a sliding scale potentially paid for by the client. Okay.
Yes, yes, except the DUI. The DUI rates, those are internal, those are rates that we have to post and we have to charge for our DUI program.
And just to double check again, some of the ODS stuff was based on a per minute before and now it's based on a per visit or something like that?
No, it was, it was based off of, a per unit was an hour's worth of service prior and then this is the new rate that they are giving us. They're trying to catch, the state is trying to match the rates with the Medi-Cal rate, mental health rates. So it is a huge increase.
So I feel.
It was very shocking to us as well.
I feel the need to follow up with Behavioral Health to understand, well, what does that do for the sliding scale fee for those clients that do still have to pay for some of these services rather than Medi-Cal entirely paying for the entire bill? Because to change it from $33.90 to $463 makes me very curious as to what is the bill that I would be able to receive if I was requesting those services. So I feel the need to follow up on that. Thank you.
We can definitely do that with you. All right, after Behavioral Health, the Building Division and the Cannabis Program, well, no, that one is a no, but the Building revised them versus a fee study for staff time that actually takes to provide the permit. That would also go with all of the community development fees other than down with Planning Division. The increases to the fees collected there are for other departments. So within the permit, it technically took some Public Works or other departments' staff time and it's all paid through one permit and then split out. So those increases are all related to other departments adjusting their fees. Public Works itself, it was CPI increase only. Public Health is a big change because our old county website had a link to their fees and that no longer exists. So there's no real change to the fees, it's just now they're listed on the master fee instead of a link to the website, to a different location on the website. Environmental Health, they went up by CPI increase and an actual fee study related to the time it takes to provide the service.
Yeah, some of these EH fees are crazy big. So if there's a fee study behind it, I'd like to see it, number two, before we even talk about approving these hikes, they're crazy big and there's some disparities in there. So I don't need to put you on the spot or put EH on the spot, but.
So I don't need to put you on the spot or put EH on the spot, but...
Well, hopefully either Craig or Casey Moreno are on to be able to answer some of the questions. Craig is...
Indiscent.
Darn it, I always forget to change that background. My apologies. For those of you who love the art of David Whyland, that's my background today. Yes, Supervisor Green, you're absolutely right. These fees are... Fee increases are far larger than we ever anticipated when we started doing this fee study. The fee study is solely based on the average amount of time that we are engaged in any one of those fees, when somebody pulls a permit, the amount of time it takes to drive to the location, complete the inspection, and return back to accounting. So that's what the fees are based on, and we were not anticipating these numbers either.
Was the fee study presented to the Board for review?
They are not normally. It's presented to admin, and then we present you the fees.
Did you have time to check in with the department head before today? About...
Regardless of what it says, so there's some disparities. So I'm looking at restaurant and bar, over 650 square feet, goes up $998. But if it's less than 650 square feet, for whatever reason, it's $1,400. So that's twice what the original fee was, and it's a bigger fee for a smaller facility. Anyway.
Yes. And that... It seems kind of to be wildly weird to have that. Traditionally, we spend a lot more time with smaller restaurants. Typically, people who are just getting into the door, opening a restaurant, getting started, we spend an awful lot of time in outreach education significantly during their plan check and inspections to help them get their facility, you know, safe, clean, and ready for business.
Similarly, we have cottage licenses. We have this micro-enterprise home kitchen operation now, more than doubles. And again, these are small operations that we're proposing to more than double the permit fee for.
Yes. It's important, again, the numbers that you're seeing are solely the numbers that we looked at. How do I explain? It's only what the numbers are telling us. We're not putting any judgment as to whether it's a small business, whether it's a large business, whether it's a small facility, large facility. It's the amount of time that's being dedicated to those projects. And yes, the micro-enterprise home kitchen operation, the intention is to keep that program be very small, to encourage people to, you know, open small businesses, start their dream of owning a restaurant at a level that's more easily attainable. However, we, in the initial phase, and this is a very new program, and we only have two years of data on it, we spent a significant amount of time getting people into those permits. They had a lot of questions, a lot of things that they didn't understand about the ordinance, that we spent a lot of education time with them. This is, again, just the time dedicated to the project. We're not really looking at whether it was a small, a big cottage food, but we absolutely agree that, you know, we still want to keep those fees low, but we are just presenting exactly what the numbers are telling us.
Did you have something to add?
Well, I just... Craig, can you resend Administration, myself, and Christine Hutt, who is admin analyst the fee study again, and we will disseminate it to the Board?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you want to finish? Or... Oh, you had a question, too?
So I just wanted to support the comments from Supervisor Green. I think that it's not just for us. I think it's for the public. People who have been used to maybe paying these costs for renewals or things like that, it's good to have that transparency as to why the cost has increased. So I think just sending it to the Board, in my personal opinion, is not good enough. I think that we need to, for example, restaurant and bar going from 7:45 to 14:03, I think that it is something that we just shouldn't keep internal. I don't believe it's private information. I believe it's public information. And I think the more transparent we are to help people understand, then we're going to take away some questions as to why. To see the CPI increase, that's easily understood. Everyone's dealing with that, and unfortunately, we have to deal with the same thing, which makes everything increase all across the Board. But to see it increase more based on a time study, I've been here for more than four years. I have not seen a single time study. My fault for not asking for one, but I think this year is a good time to request for one and be more transparent on some of these things. And environmental health does stick out. We're not here to do free work. We're obviously not here to get paid for the work in the sense of making profit or making money either, but I think to be transparent when there's a drastic change, rather than a subtle change, that we need to be transparent.
And if I can just add to that, I distinguish in a time study, and I do want to see it. And, you know, MHKO is a brand-new program. Obviously, nobody knew how to do it yet. So the understanding is we charge reasonable cost of regulation, and maybe the law changed, now it's actual cost for records. I don't know. I was going to ask that later on, too. But, you know, the fact that we are trying to create new forms, create new procedures for a new type of permit, it's not a slam dunk that all that time gets charged to the applicant. You know, some of that has to be absorbed by the department. A fair and reasonable amount can be charged to the applicant. But the whole goal of MHKO is to create low barriers to get people into the food industry, and that this is the exact opposite of what's happened. So just sensitive to that.
All right.
So what would you guys like related to the environmental health? I do have Craig sending the study. Do you want to see that as soon as possible? Or continue with the rest and possibly pull that one out for now?
Go ahead.
My personal opinion is that this is put into place as of July 1. Is it possible to continue this? Get that further information, rather than segregating? I accept that there is a process to get all these numbers inputted into our system, but just kind of curious if that's... I saw a no coming.
I'm trying to say, you know.
You know.
So it would have to be segregated, and the main reason is that certain CDD fees, which are also included in this, require 60 days before going into effect, and that's why it comes this early. So we could break out the environmental health, remove it from this resolution, and bring it forward in a week or so once, and they would still be going live July 1, once the Board has time to look at the fee study.
I mean, if we can segregate...
Yeah. The master fee can come anytime there's reasonable...
And so I would also take that if we approve today, that the master fee schedule for CDD would not take effect...
It's like July 2nd or 3rd.
Yeah. It would be a little bit after July 1. Okay.
Do you have any further comments?
There are a few more departments, but they are mostly through either CPI increases or website link update. So those ones are pretty standard changes.
Okay. Vice Chair, Simon?
Yeah, you know, obviously, we're all sensitive, you know, with the fees, especially when we change them or raise them. And no matter, you know, what direction we're moving or conversation we're having, we just did the wildfire preparedness stuff, and, you know, as we move into the next decade, there's going to be a lot of changes that come with the building codes, other things like that. And these are just things that we need to, you know, continue moving forward with. We are at a point that, you know, the study has been done. We need to be able to move forward and recover the fees to do the work that needs to be done out there. So from my point of view, I'm ready to move forward, yeah. Is it easy to make these decisions? No. But it's another thing, too, when you're asking for just to read through a report of, you know, looking to go out and to do the work, to go out with a field visit or do some other things to go out and see how this operates. We all have businesses in each one of our districts that we see, some brand-new that are starting up, and others. But anytime it's rolled into, you know, the legislative or political process here at the county, it's going to come along with the cost to do business. So clearly understand the questions, getting the information that was asked for as far as, you know, how it was put together, and as we move forward, that's always important to have that data. And Supervisor Spatier and Supervisor Green, you do a good job of that. But today, I'm ready to move forward, and I would just say, I don't like the word segregation. Could we just say, hey, we're going to pull that out and get a separate look at that? You know, we're not segregating any departments or anything like, so if we just say amend if that changes, I'd greatly appreciate, and we don't use that word.
Yeah. Based on my phone calls with both our Deputy CAO Carter and our department or our director? What's Craig? With Craig. My phone call with Craig yesterday. You know, the... I'm comfortable with the fees. I think we could put the case study available at the Environmental Health counter for when people come in and have questions, so that we've got transparency on how we got You know, sometimes these fees changes are hard, but we do have to cover the work that goes into everything. Supervisor Spatier?
So there was, if you don't mind, just a couple of things that were confusing. I'm going to go back to Animal Control, wanting to see if it's just like a typograph that we can fix. Let me get to it here. So on redemption fees, and I'm looking only at the ones in yellow, it says, "Large livestock impound, 500-plus." Can we add pounds to that to make sure that it's not 500-plus animals? Because before that, it talks about dogs, first, second, third, fourth plus. I'm guessing we're talking pounds here. So that one should have that. And then on... Later on, I noticed in the "Large animals under owner request euthanasia," it says, "Large animal less than 200 pounds." Would that be greater than 200 pounds? Or is there no... Is there no charge of the animals greater than 200 pounds? Or are there never animals greater than 200 pounds that get euthanasia? I just... That part kind of...
To be honest, I can't answer that one. Jonathan possibly on?
He's on the road.
That's true. He's on the road. I honestly can't answer that from my...
Okay. If it's something we can look at, just in case we need to amend it at a future date, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't...
Will do.
Because it limits 201 pounds, it's free? I don't know. Because there's no identifier of where it would fit.
It's got to be greater than 200.
And then my last one is also, and some of these things popped out at me later than it should have. I know that there are explanations, but part of this, to me, is the balancing of, we want to make sure we don't work for free for a private entity who's trying to start a business, but we also want to promote getting businesses, and so that's why these conversations, to ensure that the right process is done, is made public. But another one that I think is part of our social fabric, that's important to make sure it's accessible, I'm seeing that we almost doubled our fees for our marriage license, and I'd like to get a little better explanation. I know I was told supposedly it was 70, and now it's... Went to 35, and now it's back to 70. So one of those things that I'd like to get a better understanding, I want to make sure that it continues to be accessible to the general public. We do have a large portion of our community who deals with poverty, and I want to make sure that getting a marriage license is not something that hampers versus being accessible. So that's another one that stood out to me. And I don't think we can make any decision here, but I'd like to have a conversation where we come back. If there's a 50% increase, like we're seeing here, I think it should automatically come with evidence as to why it's being increased, rather than being a request. And so being open and transparent, and rather than just an obvious CPI increase, I think would be really helpful in moving forward, so that there's less questions and it's easier to understand both from this perspective as a Board member, but also from the public perspective, when they're looking into it, the information is already available. But that's something that's not on our agenda to make a decision today, but I'd like to bring that back for further discussion.
I'll just go with, it should be included with the fee study, over 50%, no worries, we'll take care of that.
Okay.
And I'm in complete agreement with that. As we're getting the yellow, you know, as we're looking through stuff like that, just... Yeah, that...
We'll get rid of staff aims and things.
That's a great suggestion.
And I'm happy to approve as is, because I know it can be amended. Obviously, there's stuff like CDD that needs to move forward, but I... And I suspect, I have assumptions, that what we're looking for will be exactly what we want to see in order to get the support. But I think it's important that we are given that, so that we can say yes without saying, "I assume so, yes."
Much further, I wanted to make sure...
Sure.
Because we're putting so much scrutiny on that kind of thing, I wanted to make sure the $50 fee that is not technically new, but we're adding for the auditor controller, is actually per Government Code 711.4E.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the proof.
Thank you. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I think I know how this is going to go. So just for the record, when I'm saying no, among the other changes, we just honored some nonprofits, but if they want a seasonal permit from EH, it's going to go up more than six times the original fee. And then if you want to get your service club permit, it's going to go up roughly 300, 200%. Can't support that, even with a fee study.
Okay. I'm going to open it up for public comment. We've got a hand... Or I don't see anybody in the chambers that's coming up through the microphone. We do have a hand up, Betsy Khan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Go ahead, yeah. Go ahead, Betsy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board, Betsy Khan. And I appreciate the comments of Mr. Green and Bruno Spatier. I would like to, even though it's really... I know you can't do much about it, I would still like to go on the record opposing the use of the Bay Area CPI in light of the fact that the United States Housing and Urban Development Agency designated Lake County as a severely economically disadvantaged county decades ago, which in turn triggered the California Housing and Community Development Agency to fund our Community Action Agency, et cetera. I mean, it's... Our median income and average income is just in total conflict with that CPI. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. And I don't see any other hands up. No one else in the chambers? Bring it back to the Board. Supervisor Spatier?
Wondering if you can speak to that CPI comment?
The Board does have the ability to change which CPI we utilize. We are considered the closest... The closest area to us that can be utilized for that is the San Francisco Bay Area. There is a U.S. City National Nationwide one that is sometimes lower, so there are multiple options. We can bring something back. When Carol Hutchinson was the CAO, that's when we solidified that that was CPI that we would utilize here.
Is there another, like, Northern Coast County group? The reason I bring this up is when I was rebuilding my house and we were doing insurance payments, and you could look at being connected to the Bay Area CPI, or I think it was Mendocino County in North. And it was a significant change in insurance settlements, which CPI you were tied to.
I can look into it again if the Board would like. Yeah.
Yeah, I would like that. And I appreciate the comment from the public member. Because I kind of feel like that's our... I'm not going to say we have an issue, but we're also having to deal with prevailing wages that are tied to the Bay Area, and I know that we kind of feel that's not exactly the average rate that we should be dealing with, but that's what we have to deal with. And if we have the choice here to break away and have a different CPI, again, as long as... as we're not working for free, because that's, or else we have to reduce the other services that we provide to the community, it's a balancing act. But I'm very interested.
Yeah, I think complicated there too, because I think some of the behind conversation, we're talking about the prevailing wage and trying to increase that work that's being done here by our contractors, other folks that are down in the county to kind of address that issue. We're talking about the income that an individual can make in the area. So it is a balancing act, having that information in the conversation when we have the CPI information brought back to us and what we're looking at. I think, yeah, a whole conversation on that is very important.
And I will say that generally they're not vastly different numbers either.
Yeah.
I think it was a 10th of a percent or some. Yeah.
But I will bring back an item.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that it? All right, I will offer the resolution.
With amendment.
With amendment? You unclicked.
Oh, that would be it. The amendment.
What was the amendment? Let me, let me make sure.
The $50 fee for the clerk's office, based on that government code that we received. And then the typographical error that I mentioned, at least for the 500 plus not being animals, but pounds.
So amendments, offer the resolution with amendments.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
No.
And Supervisor Pyska?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, 10:30 AM. Why don't we take a five minute break? Okay, we are going to move on to our item eight, 10:00 AM, Assessment Appeal Hearing, sitting as the Board of Equalization. 8.1, Consideration of Withdrawal on the Following Assessment Appeal Applications, A, number 12-2021 Wells Fargo Bank, and B, 60-2020, 61, 2020, 62, 2020, 2021, 20, 2021, 21, 2021, H&amp;S Energy.
All right, so Wells Fargo was a protective appeal to keep their rights open until they could verify their business property. They didn't have time beforehand, so they verify that and they withdrew. H&amp;S Energy Power Mart withdrew five appeals for temporary reductions in value. Later in the agenda, would they agree to a stipulation on their base year value on one of the properties on item 8.3? Or just needs to make a motion and.
8.3?
Withdrawals.
8.1?
You need action?
Yeah. We need public comment.
No, there's none for, yeah. So.
8.1?
Yes, I'll go ahead and move with the recommendation.
Yes, it would be a motion to accept the withdrawal on Assessment Appeal Applications, number 12-2021 Wells Fargo Bank, and 60-2020, 61-2020, 62-2020, 20-2021, 21-2021, H&amp;S Energy.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. So 8.2, Consideration of Request by the Appellant to Continue the Following Assessment Appeal Applications, A, number 22-2021 Worldmark, and B, number 16-2021 Tesla Energy, and C, 13-2021, and 14-2021 Safeway Inc. to the November 7, 2023 Board of Supervisors Meeting at 10:00 AM.
So we are currently working with Worldmark and they've left more time to work up their 2021 appraisal to include COVID vacancies at the resort. They stipulated on the 2020 appeal for item 8.3. Tesla's Energy and Safeway's agent both contacted the clerk requesting a continuance. We haven't heard from them. Board action to.
Wasn't that the same reason for continuing in the fall from Worldmark?
No, it was the earlier one, the 2020 appeal. We came to a stipulation, that's the one they continued. They came, we'll get to it, went to 8.3. But this is, this is the first time the, the 2221 appeal has been.
Okay.
All right, I'll take a shot at here and move to continue the following Assessment Appeal Applications, number 222021 Worldmark, B, number 162021 Tesla Energy, C, 132021, and 142021 Safeway Inc. to the November 7, 2023 Board of Supervisors Meeting at 10:00 AM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 8.3, Consideration of Stipulation on the Following Assessment Appeal Applications, A, number 682020 Worldmark, and B, 182020 H&amp;S Energy.
So this is the Worldmark from the previous board hearing that was continued. We're stipulating on the 2020 valuation. The stipulation is based using the hotel model for operating income and expenses and capitalizing the net income. We agreed that the annual net income using hotel as a model would be approximately 1.1 million and using a 8.11 market cap rate for hospitality and a statutory 1.11 tax rate to capitalize the income arrived at a value of 11,800,000 as a temporary reduced value for the 2020 tax year. The second stipulation is for H&amp;S Energy. This is a recalculation of the 2017 base year value starting in, in the 2020 tax year. The applicant has the right to file on a base year value up to three years past the supplemental assessment that was billed. H&amp;S Energy purchased 54 Power Marts in 2017 with seven stations located in Lake County. The allocation of the Lower Lake Station was originally set by the seller and exceeds market value. The applicant provided the lender's appraisal for this parcel to finance the sale. The assessor and the applicant agree the appraised value of 4.4 million for 2017 sale date factored up to 4,655,36 for the 2020 601 tax rule, which will be enrolled as the factored base year value forward. The 2017 to 2019 601 tax rolls are closed and will not be adjusted. So the, I was in communication with H&amp;S Energy on the, the actual sale and there was, the people I was talking to was the business side, not the real estate side. They said, yeah, everything's great, go ahead and enroll it. And then later, when they realized the real estate, real property side realized that this one was way off and I do agree. So we are going with their appraisal, what they, what they did get the financing from the original transfer.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Spatier?
Yeah, so I did speak with Mr. Ford yesterday and I just want to make a, a comment. I know we were talking about our fee schedule and trying to ensure that we're balanced between the opportunities for business and making sure we're not working for free. And here I see that the original assessed rule value was approximately 27 million for the both of these and then reduced by about 11 million in total. I know that there's a lot of training that occurs in your department. I know that in the shoes of the people who are dealing with this from the business side, that reduction is pretty intense and probably favorable to, to, from their perspective, but to go through the process is arduous both for your staff and for them. So I hope that this is some of these training moments where we can see how can we get a little closer to what the applicant's opinions are, just because it's such a large difference in some of these that come to us. So it's not a question, it's just a comment, because I can't imagine being on the other side going, that's not at all what the value is, and then being agreed upon close to that. So just wanted to make that statement.
I can make a comment to this, this is Rich Ford. So with some of these valuations, a lot of it, and I've said multiple times, is it's based on information provided. So if they provide us with limited information, we're going to make the evaluation or the value of the property based on that information they provided. Sometimes when it comes to appeals, they provide additional information, kind of like you said, they get sticker shock on the original information that was provided, how we came and arrived to that number. Like in the case of Worldmark, it's 20 million, but that was based off the information they provided us to arrive at that valuation. Once they provide us additional information to bring us down, that's where a lot of times you see the swing. It has to do a lot more with information provided because that's pretty much what we work with. It's all information. And so the more information a, a property owner provides us, the better that, that answer is going to be closer from the get-go, preventing the appeal, preventing the very big difference. So I would pretty much throw it out there to the public is whenever dealing with the assessor's office, more information is better than less. It will always come to the best answer because we just have a methodology, we just apply it against, so I hope that helps.
And the, the other comment I'll make with Worldmark, they had, the base value is from early 2000s. So that's where the value originally started. Up to this point, the agents and anyone we were dealing with were saying, well, it's a timeshare, there's, there's no rent. We, we have no operating income, so the value is $2 million. And we're like, no, no, we, we have to come up with a model, we have to come up with valuation and go through the process. So once we did get, they got a new agent, we started working with him, they came to the table for a legitimate appraisal, then we can work with it.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, on a Worldmark, so I, yeah, I see the original looked like they were upside down, but then they're invoking property tax rule age, so now they're applying some income. And I guess somehow you tried to get comparables, but the, the 1.1 million annual income is the basis for this calculation. I, I don't know what level of comparables you have in Lake County to do that, number one. Number two, that's going to change over time. So can you, you changed the method that you calculate the property tax on this basically to, to incorporate their income. So just can you give us just a little bit more information on what market comparables you use to draw that, draw that agreed upon number, which seems a little low to me, to be honest? And then at what point in future years are we going to take a fresh look at that income if, if that's going to be a metric that continues to influence their property tax rate?
Okay, so the, the, the valuation that we were using, CRBE, is an information source that does the commercial hotel hospitality. We were calculating the typical rental room rates using their, what they have on site. That gave us a gross potential income. Then we used the Northern California region for vacancy and loss and 25% was the industry standard for expenses. So that's how we arrived at the 1.1 million. That was value was capitalized based on the, the sales part for hotels. So hotels for resorts are range, but an operating resort will sell between 8 million and 18 million depending on location and what amenities it has, if it's a convention center or not. So that's where we got the supporting information.
And does that just stick for all time or again?
No, every year that has to be reviewed. So there, there's two valuations going on here. They, that 20 million was the factored base year, the prop 13, factored base year value. That's from early 2000s. Every year that goes up by either 2% or the Consumer Price Index. Anytime that value is not enrolled, the assessor's staff has to go and do a, another valuation and determine on January 1st, is it 20 million or is it less? So we're going to be updating that before the close of the roll to determine for the, the next tax year where that value should be. We'll probably see an appeal from that and then go from there forward, but that, that'll be the process. Anytime you are at a reduced value, the assessor's office needs to look at those values.
Just for clarity, also, you talked about comparables. Comparables are only one of our three, you know, possible methodologies to use, right? So that's going to be the market approach for us. You have the income approach, which is closer to what we're describing here, which is basically taking the income, taking a cap rate, taking all the information that he just described and coming up with a valuation on that way. Or you have the cost approach. The cost approach usually is when a property is newly built. But generally those three approach, if you took all three and worked all three on every property, they should be within range of each other, but they're not exactly. In this case, usually when you have kind of an income producing property, most, more than likely, you're going to take the income approach. So just for clarity is when you're asking about comparables and we're using the income approach, we're not necessarily using comparables. Now, you should be able to technically bounce it against comparables, do that same methodology and come within range. It's never going to be exact, but it shouldn't be that far off between the three methodologies. So just for clarity.
And the final difference on the, the income approach is the comparables are mainly used to generate that cap rate. So we're using the other, because these properties are so different, what is the income generated? So you can take the, the net income of other properties and then the sales price for sales, even though they're different and in different locations, and that's where we got the, the 8.11%.
Okay, did you have something else Supervisor Spatier?
Just playing with my.
Ready for action?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Your board, your board may inquire, because it's, what's being proposed here is a stipulation, whether any of the property owners are present?
Okay. Are any property owners present in the chambers or in Zoom? I have a hand up from Betsy Khan. Betsy, is it, okay, she's down, all right. I'm not, I don't see anybody. I can bring it back to the board now.
May I?
Supervisor Spatier?
I'm just going to interrupt real quick. There seems to be a sound.
Something going on.
There's some artifacts in the sound that I'm hearing. It sounds like, I mean, Mr. Ford sounded like he had a filter in front of his face when he was speaking and I, I also kind of heard it when.
What?
Mr. Guindevano. I don't think it's anybody's, it, it seems to be coming from our sound system. Anyways, I just thought I'd bring it up. It just doesn't sound right. But I'm ready to move forward.
Supervisor Sabatier, if I may suggest, your board may take the motion for stipulation separately per, for each property in reference to the Assessment Appeal Application, so one separate motion for each.
Okay.
I turned it off.
Ah. So I move to approve the stipulation on the Assessment Appeal Application, number 68-2020 Worldmark.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And I move to approve the following, the stipulation on the following Assessment Application, number 18-2020 H&amp;S Energy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consideration, 8.4, Consideration of Following Assessment Appeal Application, number 15-2021 Lakeport Post-Acute.
Okay, so the burden of proof is on the applicant. This is not an owner occupied residence and that's under Property Tax Rule 321. The assessor's presentation will be second. The Assessment Appeal Board may question the applicant and the assessor's staff. The item is taken into closed session for deliberation and the appellant or applicant is notified by mail of the local Board of Equalizations decision.
And just to supplement that, if the applicant is absent, the board may inquire as to the notice, any notice provided to the applicant, any testimony as to this item. should be taken under oath. The assessment appeal itself is not subject to Brown Act requirements because it's in a quasi judicial capacity. Burden of proof, the standard of evidence is a preponderance of evidence. If this is, the property is a residential owner occupied, the appellant presents first. If it's a non-owner occupied, the assessor recorder presents first. Informal rules of evidence are followed, is the standard here, where any evidence that the board deems relevant would be admitted and the decision in this appeal belongs to the board.
Okay, and do we have the applicant? Lakeport Post Acute LLC or any of their representatives here? Ryan McClure? Not seeing any hands in Zoom and not seeing anyone in the chambers. So we'll close that out.
So the motion would be a motion to deny the application for failure to appear.
Supervisor Spatier?
I was really hoping somebody would. I was really hoping somebody would show up as Lakeport Post Acute with especially the services that they provide to the community makes me nervous. Has there been, what's your communication been with them?
So this is actually an agent who does this up and down the state and contacts clients to do it on a percentage. So it's hit and miss. He, this is the second time, last time he withdrew. It's, I'm trying to say this nicely. He does things that an appraiser, a licensed appraiser can't do. So that's probably why he's not here.
Supervisor Crandall?
Have you finished with your questions? So I was going to motion to deny the appeal application 15-2021 regarding Lakeport Postal Acute.
Could you have another comment?
I was just going to say, in my conversation with Mr. Ford yesterday, he reminded me, I thought for some reason the timeline was one year, but it's a two-year timeline. This is from November 29th, 2021. Is it possible to continue this to November 7th, to still keep it within the two-year timeline with hopes that maybe that there's better communication where they can, that we can come to either an agreement or they withdraw themselves? Because I feel uncomfortable making a final decision unless forced to because of timelines or anything like that, when this is a 24-bed facility that provides healthcare services to our elderly. And I'm just uncomfortable to look at the range of, I think it was 6 million to 3 million or something like that. It's a large range. It's not $100,000 difference, like the Wells Fargo one was 50%, but it's still only a $70,000 difference. We're looking at a $3.5 million difference at this moment in time, which is 50% more. So I would like to suggest a continuation and a final continuation, since it's still within that first two-year statutory allowance. But I'm just nervous about making a decision on this without better understanding where they are and if they're asking something ridiculous or if we are and we're willing to negotiate. I just, yeah.
Just to clarify, just, and then I'll let Dave make a comment, is on the application, you essentially, as a property owner, can put anything on your valuation. You essentially can say that I think the value of my property is zero. So we do have to be careful, kind of making a distinction of what they put on there. They have the right to, of course, come and deal with us and go through that process. But you have to be kind of careful just because they put a number there, that that's an assumed number. Sometimes it's very well calculated and very well backed up when they get to us. Sometimes it's not so much. And they legally can just put pretty much almost zero.
And I get that, but we also did approve stipulations where it decreased 50% as well from 20 million to 10 million. So I mean, it.
But I just wanted to say that for clarity, you know, for the public to understand the process a little bit more is that is a possibility also when you fill out that form.
Absolutely.
Right, but the, yeah, but this application was filled out by VersaTax Consulting and not the owner.
No, this is actually filled out, VersaTax is representing the tenant.
The tenant, okay.
Because this is a triple net lease. So the landlord just receives a payment. If you'd like, I can just do my presentation, because my presentation on a continuance is going to be the same. There, from the assessor's standpoint, there isn't a reduction on this. You can use the information out there to get whatever value you want, and that's basically what my presentation will show. But I'll be happy to go through it, even though the applicant's not here. If you'd like to, just go through the process if you want to do the time, that's fine. Or I can hand it out and you can review it later, whatever you'd like. Because I went through and made copies and did all the work because I thought they're going.
That was my expectation.
Vice Chair Simon?
So there was a motion.
There was a motion.
And I'm going to second the motion.
Okay.
So.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Okay, now we will go, we have, our next timed item is 11:30. So thank you, thank you both.
Do you want to try 7.2?
And we also have a lot of hold items. Yeah. All right, we will, where'd she go? Okay, we're going to go to 7.2.
That's very kind of you.
Consideration of a letter of support for a cooperative agreement between the Bureau of Land Management, BLM Yukaya Field Office, and the Tribal Eco Restoration Alliance, TARA. This is an item that Supervisor Simon and, Vice Chair Simon and I have brought together. It's a cooperative agreement that came to us from the, as a request from Joseph Rodriguez, the BLM manager, particularly for starting fuels reduction work in the Black Forest. Is there something that you want to add?
No, obviously, as we continue to move on, you know, the county, our agencies, our departments, you know, we can't do this alone. So bringing everybody to the table and looking at these cooperative agreements or support letters, however we can do that, we want to continue those conversations. Obviously, we have some great groups doing some work here. Obviously, the Eco Restoration TARA that is going along is the tribal side, I think, equivalent to, you know, just like the North Shore Fire Crew that we have. So having those boots on the ground and cooperation is always very important on how we move forward. So I completely support this idea and always looking, when we make these things, that there are other projects throughout the county and BLM areas too, that hopefully we can continue this cooperation and continue the discussion. I know there's projects down in the south end of the county, other places that may hopefully spur things along. That's what I will hopefully encourage from this happening.
Yeah, and this, I am, I was delighted to get the email from Mr. Rodriguez because this, there's, there's a considerable, considerable amount of work that needs to happen in the Black Forest, but there's been difficulties with finding the crews and having, you know, the agreements in place. So this solves a lot of problems and hopefully we can get right back onto that work that, that really needs to happen. Supervisor Green?
Yes, certainly going to support this. My only question is, you know, I've made some halting efforts to contact the Yukaya Field Office on other matters and never had any success. So I think the gentleman mentioned here is with BLM Fire and is not necessarily a field manager for BLM as a whole in Yukaya. I was just unclear on the role. Going to support this, hoping I can get some contact from BLM. And I didn't know if this was, gentleman mentioned in the letter was specific to fire suppression efforts or was more involved with the Yukaya Field Office and all the BLM lands.
You can reach out to him. He is.
Accessible.
Yeah, he's accessible. All right, Supervisor Spatier?
I think you might be looking for Nick Lavrov?
That's the name I've heard better.
Okay. I want to say absolutely yes. This doesn't solve my problem, but obviously this is not about me. This is, I believe we said in our last letter that we supported with the 30,000, no, sorry, getting ahead of myself, that 50% of our land is public land. So obviously, we need to figure out ways to not wait for things to happen, but be proactive in getting things to happen. I know I'm continuing my conversations with BLM that will be occurring this month for the wilderness areas, but I know that the Black Forest has been, no offense, excuse after excuse as to why we can't make it happen. And I think that TARA is going to be a great asset for the type of work that they've already done and shown that they can do to provide that support there. So also glad to see that the letter was corrected. I was curious as to one aspect of it, but happy to support this.
Thanks. I will open it up for public input. Anyone in the chambers? No hands in Zoom. Bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I'd like to approve the letter of support for a cooperative agreement between the Bureau of Land Management, BLM Yukaya Field Office, and the Tribal Eco Restoration Alliance, TARA, and authorize the chair to sign. That'd be good, right?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. Thank you, everybody. All right, we will look at some of our pulled items. Of the consent, we will start with 5.1, approve and continue the proclamation of the existence of a local emergency due to pervasive tree mortality.
Joan Moss, I feel that Jessica Pyska has worked very hard on this. And what I want to ask, I haven't been able to go to the committee meetings, but I want to ask if you have considered adding a clause that after you kill the tree that's dead and take it down, if you offer the public or the tree growers a chance to plant a tree in its place? You know, take the tree down and then planted, plant a live tree. I think it would make it more user-friendly, the whole project. But I think that all I've done is heard about it. I haven't listened to the hearings and I don't know how many agencies are involved. But I would like to make that kindly suggestion to help. This is not a critical suggestion. It's just a kindly suggestion and to have more hearings about it. All we hear is tree mortality, period. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the comment. I'll just remind you that this is our proclamation that we made a year ago, just to state that we have an emergency and every month we have to restate this and renew it. And so it's just part of our monthly schedule for all of our open emergencies. Anything from the board? Any?
There's nothing further. I move to approve the continuation.
Hold on. Anything from the chambers or anyone in Zoom? Okay. Now I'll bring it back to the board for action.
If there's nothing further, I move to approve the continuation of the proclamation of the existence of a local emergency due to pervasive tree mortality.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is 5.3, approve the continuation of proclamation declaring a Clear Lake Hitch emergency.
Joan Moss, again, I want to present to you, this is a publication put out by the Environmental Protection Agency about avoiding mercury in the lake.
Okay, this is, again, this is just the monthly renewal of our proclamation for the hitch emergency. So it doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with mercury in the lake. This is just renewing our proclamation.
I feel that it does.
I would encourage you to bring this as a, as a public input at 9:05 AM.
It doesn't, it doesn't mention fish, hitch as a fish.
You're, you're speaking off turn. This is not the.
So next week I'll be a public input.
Yes, yes, do that. Okay, thank you. Any comments from the board? Anything from the public about renewing this emergency? Not seeing anything. Bringing it back to the board for action.
If there's nothing else, move to approve continuation of the proclamation declaring a Clear Lake Hitch emergency. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We will go to item 5.8. Adopt resolution approving the California Department of Public Health's CDPH Emergency Preparedness, PHEP Hospital Preparedness Program, HPP, and Pandemic Influenza Panflu Grant Contract for Fiscal Years 2022 to 2027 in the amount of $1,818,136, and authorize the department head to sign CDPH Form 1229 Grant Funding Agreement and Exhibit F, Federal Terms and Conditions. Ed Supervisor Sabatier pulled this.
So I don't have an issue with the item itself. Looking forward to passing this so we can get this grant and do the work. But what I do have an issue with is that artifact is back in the vault sound, but I will keep going, is if you scroll down on the attachment 22-10653, County of Lake Health Services, Department Exhibit D, and if you scroll down to page, I don't even know what page this is, doesn't want to tell me. Page four of 17, you will see that Lake County's population is 63,940. And that's not correct. And if we're getting money for healthcare programs and we're not being identified with the right population, I feel we're leaving money behind or we're not requesting for the accurate numbers in order to get the accurate amount that we probably deserve. I don't know what that amount looks like, but I know I did have a conversation with Director Portney. He submitted me some information from the state of California in response to my question, saying that it's based on the Finance Department, E1, whatever that means. When I looked at the link that was provided to me, it still showed us at 67,000 or 66,000, based on the latest numbers that the Finance Department, I cannot find 63,000. And I would like to request that either admin work with the department or just request the department that we shouldn't just say thank you, we should fight and make sure we get every last dollar that we deserve to make sure that we bolster any and all of our healthcare programs that we provide to our community, our health metrics require that from us. Other than that, I'm ready to pass this item. I just wanted to make sure we were aware that it may appear that we are not being provided the right sum based on an incorrect number. We've never had 63,940 within the last 10 years or more that I'm aware of.
Obviously, great catch on that one. You know, we just completed, right, our census. And I know on multiple boards, at least the Ava Board is very important. I know it little increases, we made some changes there. Yeah, I completely agree. That's excellent point. Yeah, county-wide, what do you call that, a global change through all our documents or needs to be looked at for sure. So.
And, and this document comes from the state because it has all of the numbers of the populations for every county. It just looks like the state doesn't have the right number or what population is not being counted in those numbers, I'd like to better understand or if possible, fix it to ensure that we get the right proportion of our dollars that we need.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a hand up from Rainey Grafton. Rainey, if you'd like to respond?
Yes, please. I'm looking for the specific page and I have not found it yet, but that was, number was provided on a table by the granting agency. So it wasn't a number we pulled.
Yeah.
I'm happy to go back and look and make sure it reflected whatever the, the number was at that point, or if there's any other information I can bring, I'm happy to.
And it was on exhibit D? And it was on Exhibit D? And I'm looking at page four. Uh, and I, I went to the Finance Department to look at, uh, 2021 and 2022, and I just could not find anything that matched, which included looking at the link, uh, that Director Portney sent me, that the state sent to him, saying it's based off this. And even that link showed nothing about sixty-three thousand. It was, uh, still within the sixty-six or sixty-seven thousand range. I know our 2020 census was sixty-eight thousand something.
Yeah.
Uh, actually, I think it was sixty-eight, nine thirty. Um, but, uh, it also did show that we had a reduction based on the Finance Department's, uh, analysis, but it was not down to this low of a population. So just want to make sure. Uh, it, it could be that it is what it is, uh, but I, I just feel we should be fighting for every dollar when it comes to healthcare for our community.
Of course, and I'll look into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and if the rest of the board agrees, I would like a presentation on the project and everything, um, that's going to be implemented and some timelines. Uh, I think this is exciting and, uh, you know, there's a lot to unpack here. And so I'd like to see that coming up soon. I don't know how all of you feel about that.
I agree.
Yes, yes. Okay. What's it, how, when would we like to see that?
The next ninety days.
Next ninety days? So just after budget hearings? Beginning of the fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay. I, we have a hand up in Zoom room. Betsy Khan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board. Betsy Khan. Um, I'm just wondering if there's any possibility that the state, uh, would only provide those funds to actual residents of the county since we have a significant percentage of second homeowners that are not, um, funded for services here in this county? It, it just could be one of those, uh, impacts. Just curious. Thank you.
I, I would suspect that our census is based on primary residents. And so, again, those numbers don't match.
Right.
And maybe, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah. But I, but I do agree with the conversation. If the, like I, it says, uh, sixty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-one. If we can get that number in there, whatever, we'd rather have it rounded up, not down. Uh, even if it is temporary residents that they're counting or other things like that, each one of these numbers are going to bring more dollars to the community to help the folks that are here, so, that are going to access these things. So I agree with that. If we make that change, that's a, that's an excellent job. Supervisor, uh, Sabatier.
Is there anyone in the chambers that wanted to speak on this item? Joan, this was on your list.
Yeah, I'll do public input.
It's right now.
Right now.
Right now. On item 5.8.
Well, I was told to come back and do public input, so that's what I was going to do next week.
Okay, but on, you, you submitted a list of, of items that you.
Yes, I did want to, want to take this consent agenda out and talk about it de, in detail. So my purpose in it is already complete.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I offer the resolution.
All right, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Piesga.
Yes. 5.9 or?
Just to add, um, and what, what I'm hoping for, because this was an issue before when we looked at our COVID rates, they were using 2010 census instead of 2020. So every time we looked at our rates, they were off by point two, point three percent, which being so, uh, up and down, um, with barely of a, a jump or bump, it, it mattered to have the, the right population. So I think that this conversation can lead to different changes as well, uh, if there's a need to fix. So just wanted to add that.
All right, 5.9. Adopt resolution approving a request from Lake County Health Services to submit a renewal application for the California Department of Public Health Immunization Assistance Program, IAP, for fiscal year 2022 through 2027 in the amount of one million four hundred forty-six, six hundred thirty-three dollars and sixty-six cents, authorizing the Director of Health Services to sign. And this was pulled by you, Joan?
Sam is the last one.
I have the same objection as with the other item. If you're going to do it again, I'd like to do it in detail with public hearings.
Okay. Anything else from the board or the public? I do have two hands, well, one hand up.
Is it?
Is this? Betsy Khan? You can unmute and start your three minutes.
Sorry, I just drifted. Apologies.
Okay. All right, bring it back to the board for action.
I just wanted to provide some, uh, details if possible.
Oh, sure.
Um, I don't have it in front of me, but I remember reading through this that this is for immunizations for the flu, for COVID, for hepatitis, and for a multitude of viral infections, uh, that our public health has historically been doing as far as a service to our, uh, our communities. And this is to obtain grant funding to make sure we continue those programs. Uh, it's in the details within the attachment, and I would say please read the attachment for all those details.
Okay. Action.
Offer the resolution. Sorry, beat somebody to it.
No, uh, just very quickly before you offer the resolution, I just shout out to Health Services, vaccination programs used to be oh-so boring, and then COVID hit, and they became oh-so interesting. Uh, it's, I'm excited to see this relatively boring resolution that's just for grant funding for vaccinations that falls squarely within Health Services wheelhouse. And they've been doing a great job for years under COVID. I look forward to them doing a great job under this grant program. And I just wanted to support Health Services on this item.
Okay, thank you. The resolution's been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Piesga.
Yes. Okay, the final consent item that was pulled is item 5.15. Adopt resolution to approve agreement between Lake County Adult Services and California Department of Aging in the amount of one hundred forty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and authorize the department head to sign the agreement. You wanted this one pulled too?
Yes, um, I was reading this consent agenda in the background materials. I agree with the idea of internet and computer and Wi-Fi at the senior centers. I disagree with the policy of the senior center I talked to that said, "We don't get political here." And I think to have seniors say they can't say what they feel about different laws, um, deprives them of their civil rights. And they do have the right to get political in the senior centers and say what they believe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I got really confused how that relates to.
We, um, do we have any comments from the board?
Broadband is good.
Okay, open up to the public. No hands in the Zoom room?
Joan Moss, again, I feel that, um, not being able to be political and say what you believe inside a senior center reflects on whether they get to have Wi-Fi.
Joan, it's, that's not really what this item is about. Thank you. Okay, are we ready for action?
I offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Piesga.
Yes. Thank you so much. Now we will get down to our 6.8. Nope, we're not quite there yet. I got two minutes.
Appointments?
Yeah.
Seven point four.
Yeah, seven point four.
Seven point three.
Seven point three. Seven point three, consideration of the following advisory board appointments, Community Visioning Forum, and the Central Region Town Hall. We have. Slow internet right now. Okay. So for the Community Visioning Forum, we have one vacancy, and we have two applicants. India Akku Mendoka and Greta Ziet. And this is your committee? Do you have a suggestion?
Yes.
Recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I recommend India Mendoka.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? We have a hand up, Haji Worf. You can unmute, and you have three minutes to speak.
Actually, I have my hand up to speak on the SURF appointments.
Okay, I'll get back to you then.
Under the same agenda item.
Okay, I'll get back to you in just a moment.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, do, action on Community Visioning Forum.
I do have a quick question.
Yes.
Uh, for the Visioning Forum, is there anyone, um, on the forum with any connections to the NAACP?
I don't think so as of now. And that was the, uh, the other person.
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Um, I know that I see, uh, that they are both, um, committed to other things within the community, which is great, always difficult to choose from. But I just wanted to ask the question, but at this moment, I think I'll support going in the direction that those on the Visioning Forum are offering.
All right. So I move to appoint India Mendoka to the Community Visioning Forum.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, we have Central Region Town Hall, five general membership vacancies, and we have quite a few applicants. So I will look to you, Supervisor Crandall, for your suggestions for this new town hall.
I do have some suggestions, but I'll go ahead and allow, uh, public comment to, uh, commands first.
Okay. Anyone in the chambers? I know we've got a hand in Zoom. Haji Worf, if you want to unmute, and you've got three minutes.
Uh, good morning, Board members. My name is Haji Worf from Upper Lake. I am a constituent of Supervisor Crandall in District Three. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Of the slate of SURF applicants put forward, I want to recommend that two names be disqualified from consideration, that of John Jensen and Kurt McKelvey. For the past six months, we have witnessed these two bad actors aggressively undermine a very patient Supervisor Crandall, with them feeling entitled to the same, if not more, recognition and political standing as an elected official. Of course, their claim to this privilege is self-appointed and undeserved, yet their constant disrespect, interruptions, innuendos, outright maligning of character, and abuse of their perceived influence display a lack of character, um, and any sense of humility, self-awareness, or decorum in representing the interests of the community. Traits that are important in public service. I want to remind the public, these two men sought to divide the community by instigating racial tensions. They vigorously attempted to insert highly inflammatory language into a resolution, charging the Scotts Valley Pomo and their representatives with, quote, "colonial behavior," end quote, simply because they objected to a local project that impacted their self-interests. This showed very poor judgment and a perverse decision-making rationale, which would prove to be detrimental to the well-being of our diverse community. We do not need more bigoted bullies in leadership positions in this county. That era has lapsed, thankfully. Therefore, I feel strongly, these men should not serve in any advisory capacity if we, as a community, are committed to bringing people together instead of consolidating the interests of a few. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. It doesn't look like we have any other hands up. Oh, nope. Okay, she's got her hand. And I don't see anyone in the chambers, so I will bring it back to you, Supervisor Crandall, for your recommendations.
All right, so I, uh, will move to appoint Rebecca Schwanger, Kathy Herdman, Atlas Pearson, Austin Pratt, and Priest Martinez to the Central Region Town Hall.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, yes, so, um, just real quick, staggering the terms. So, um, so three will be for two years till December of 2025, December 31st. Sorry about that off the, probably amend the motion. So it'll be Reb, Reb, Mrs. Schwanger, Rebecca Schwanger, um, Austin Pratt, and Atlas Pearson, I mean, I'm sorry, um, Priest Martinez will be, uh, for the two-year term or basically a year and a half term, which will take, um, another year and a half before they're reappointed or, or there's new appointments. And then Kathy Herdman and, uh, Atlas Pearson for the, uh, one-year term, which would end at the end of this year. And.
Is that your amended motion?
Amended motion, yes.
Just to clarify, the terms would end on January 1, uh, right? So the two you mentioned would, uh, their terms would end January 1, 2024, and the three you mentioned would end January 1, 2025.
Well, it's December 31st, but yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Your bylaws are different.
Just for clarification, I heard four yeses on that. So do we got to start all over, or can I withdraw my second? And then he can amend the motion? I just want to make sure.
I think procedurally, you can withdraw your second so that, um, the new motion.
I'm going to withdraw my second, and so we can go ahead, Supervisor Crandall.
All right, so I'll, I'll motion to appoint Rebecca Schwanger, Austin Pratt, and Priest Martinez to the two-year terms, and then, um, Kathy Herdman and Atlas Pearson to the one-year terms for the Central Region Town Hall.
Second with the amended motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. And our 1130 item. 6.8, Review and Consideration of Travel and Reimbursement Policy from our Admin Office.
Good morning again, Board. Stephen Carter, Assistant County Administrative Officer. The bulk of the presentation will be done by Christine Hutt, our Admin Analyst. But this is the first time we've brought, um, any significant adjustment to the travel policies since 2011. There was a 2018 adjustment, which increased the maximum limit if it's at a conference from 125 to 175 with approval. So this was basically a, a full rewrite with keeping as many of the old elements as possible, but following any updates to the code. And so that I don't steal any thunder, I'm going to turn it over to Christine.
Christine Hutt, Administrative Analyst. It is my pleasure to be here today. And before you is, under, for your consideration is the new travel and reimbursement policy. The current policy was first adopted in 2001, and the current policy is outdated, and it does present some fiscal problems for both the Auditor Controller's Office and the Administrative Office. As Mr. Carter said, that the policy retains the intent, uh, of, uh, the pre, the current policy, especially of, uh, the intent of exercising responsible stewardship of public funds. Uh, the attached policy is a full rewrite. It encompasses eligibility, preauthorization, transportation, lodging, meals, mileage, and claiming reimbursement. The lodging and meals expenses adopt the acceptable rates as published by the General Services Administration, the GSA, and the mileage reimbursement rate is tied to the rate published by the State of California Controller's website. The policy also serves as a qualifying written accountable plan by meeting the other criteria as defined by the Internal Revenue Service. So the notable highlights of this are what I just mentioned as far as the, uh, rates of reimbursement for mileage and lodging and meals. So, uh, the State of Cal, the California Controller's Office publishes a, uh, mileage reimbursement rate for the state employees. for the state employees, and we are going to follow that. This policy suggests that we follow that, and that current rate is higher than we currently have in our policy for reimbursement rates. And the State of California follows the IRS adjustment, and so I think it lags about six months, but this is looked at at the IRS, at the state, federal level annually. So they're trying to keep it, keep it in keeping with what is reasonable to reimburse. Lodging and meals expenses, we found that most of the counties that we surveyed in the state of California do follow the GSA per diem rates, which are set up to be geographically unique. For example, a per diem rate for lodging and meals in Washington DC is going to be different from what you'll see in Sacramento area. So the country's been mapped out, and then for each area, when you are looking for where you're going to be traveling, you will have different lodging maximum rates and meal rates. Preauthorization form being submitted with the reimbursement claims is something new. The current policy does request, or does require, that there be a written preauthorization at the department level before travel expenses are incurred. The change here is that we're requesting that this policy requests that the, the preauthorization be submitted also to the Auditor Controller's Office, and hopefully this will bring a little more awareness to the actual costs of, that are being incurred in travel, and prevent overdrafts of accounts that reimburse those, those fees, or those claims. Also, the policy follows the rules of an accountable plan as determined by the Internal Revenue Service. This is important because certain items of reimbursement may be considered taxable events to an employee. And by having an accountable plan, this helps us prevent, or this helps us comply with those IRS regulations so that we can, we will not be, or I would say, we do not want to, we'd like to minimize any taxable events. But this is, but then, since we're talking about taxable events, this is, this is something that is a big change, and that is that according to the IRS rules for accountable plans, same-day meals reimbursement without an overnight stay is considered a taxable event. The IRS determines that business travel requires being away from your tax base, your home, for a period over a working day, and requires a rest period of an overnight stay. Otherwise, that meal is considered a taxable event if it is, if there's no overnight stay. And those are the main changes within this new policy.
So, I did speak with at least one other department head, and I understand that, and I think this is, we've got some great improvements here, things, you know, tying it to the GSA so we're not locked in to, to amounts that become irrelevant in the short future is great. And I, I think we have a department head meeting coming up later this month. I think this would, yeah, I think it'll be a great opportunity for the department heads to take some time away in on these changes and see how, how this could affect different departments, which may or may not travel more, and just get some really important feedback. So that's what I would like to request today, but I see we have a couple pens up Supervisor Spatier.
Yeah, I, I, just to add to what Ms. Hunt, Hutt said is, before we had, I think you had to submit it within 30 days, and if it wasn't submitted within 30 days, maybe it was 60 days, then you can go to the Board of Supervisors. That seems to be eliminated entirely, and I love that, because I hate the kind of in-between situation, and sometimes we're looking at $20 or something really small, and it's like, it's taking up some time. So I think that this puts a barrier in, in front and compare, and saying, meet the guidelines or else it's going to be a taxable thing, there's no choice. So I, I like that. I do have a bit of an issue, and I guess it's personal, and, and you won't be seeing anything coming from me, but it seems like we're adding or providing greater detail for the Board of Supervisors, where I thought it was going to be for out-of-county, I'm going up to the first page where it speaks, now it just says mileage and travel expenses incurred, but then it talks about all of the committees and appointments and all that travel time, and...
They're outside of the county committee?
No, no, no. It says travel to meetings of appointed organization, and then it says out-of-county, and I feel like that should be smushed together, that if it's out-of-county travel to meetings of appointed organizations, that makes sense to me, but the rest, yes, we do accumulate mileage, but I'm uncomfortable in asking for more than what we already receive. And so I would like to see that just before out-of-county, and then obviously you, and not by motion of Board of Supervisors, if you are on a committee like CSAC or RCRC or things like that, you're expected to go to those things. If you're asking for something outside of the appointment, then going to a motion of the Board of Supervisors, just as was just done recently for the resilience group for Chair Peiska and for our resiliency officer, I'm okay with that going to the Board of Supervisors, but just traveling within the county, I think that's adding more.
I brought that up with Mr. Carter yesterday, too, and one of the things that we kind of all decided on when we, when we talked about the salary increases is that it's now a full-time job, and this is part of the work inside the county. So I, I agree with that, and if we have to tweak some wording for that part of it and make it extra clear, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, it would only pertain to long travel or anything like that. We, I think we've taken out of the budget every year that we had talked about, or at least brought it way down, which...
Or just don't use it.
Yeah, or just don't use it. So I completely agree with that conversation. More taking care of all of our employees and everybody that needs to travel, every department head, every employee that needs to go somewhere, we want to make sure that they get the right rate for their mileage, they make sure they get the food that they need when they're there, because they're doing the pertinent work for, for our people. So I completely agree on, we don't need to revamp ours, we, we should take it away, but that's my thoughts on it.
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, these are more questions and comments, and I don't need an answer today. I do think this needs to go to the department heads for feedback. Some of the questions I had on the draft document, page four of 18 of that draft document, reimbursement for gratuities, on the one hand, B subdivision I says, you don't get reimbursed for tips, but then there's, the next sentence right after that appears to provide an exemption, that if you get a tip as part of a bill, you can get it. So it, it's unclear. It appears to prohibit tips, then it allows you tips, but it's unclear the mechanism. The other thing on that same page, claims must be digitally completed. I know there's a lot of Adobe Sign documents flying around this county, and that's great, except when those same documents have to come back to the board, and sometimes those digitally signed documents don't play nice with Granicus and stuff like that. So if we're going to be all Adobe Sign all the time, let's figure it out so we can access those documents properly, and all applications, including when we're taking a look at them. On page 14 of that same document, at the bottom of the page, 6.2, tax consequences of travel reimbursement, it says it may or may not have income tax consequences. If I am getting an expense check, my personal expectation is I'm getting reimbursed for money I already put out, that's my taxable money that I already put out, and so I can't answer whatever the IRS is thinking on that, but may or may not does not provide me a lot of clarity. So I am going to assume right now that a reimbursement check is going to be taxable under this new policy, but if there's an allotment where a reimbursement check is not, that would be more attractive and probably more in keeping with my thoughts of what a reimbursement plan should be. But those are questions, again, not looking for answers today. Thank you.
Would you like me to address the, the reimbursement of the meals? A little clarifying. Our understanding from reading through the IRS policy is that they're looking at whether or not this is a fringe benefit that should be taxed, or something reasonable necessary during the course of travel, of business travel, legitimate business travel, and within that context of legitimate business travel, you, any expense that you spend for lodging, your meals, your mileage, that you would be putting out of pocket, typically not lodging, right? Because mostly, we'll take care of that internally by doing that for you on a Cal card, so you're not out of pocket. The only time that there's really an issue that we had to, we, we had to think about this one, when reading the IRS policy was, or their rules, was it the same-day travel in which there was no overnight stay, and that becomes a taxable event. So unless you're, we're looking at a same-day travel, that's the only area that is, would not be reimbursed. Meals.
Correct.
Your mileage.
Okay, but the question is, when the reimbursement happens, does the county tax that amount?
No, no.
Only in those specific scenarios, which would run through payroll, which is why it becomes taxed. It's very few, if it stays within our 60-day plan, which is what the IRS requires, it's not taxable. Single day, if the department decides to pay it, which is outside of the plan, that's when it becomes taxable and goes on to your payroll. If it stays within that box, your travel per diem, no, that's not taxable.
Okay.
There was one thing that the Auditor's Office wanted me to bring up, sorry. So related to the tipping, it's, it's only when it's not optional that it's allowed, where it's auto put on. If it's optional in any way, it's not allowed.
That's the way that I read it.
If it's included.
That doesn't happen very often, but if like you're a group of six...
I can't find it.
It's auto put on, and there's some places that have it auto put on, that's the only time it's allowable as an expense from the county.
I believe the IRS accepts that as well, because they said if the tip amount is included in the bill, but if the gratuity is part of it, then that is not a taxable event to the employee.
Yeah, because if it's a choice, and you feel like giving $20 when it's a $3 meal, that doesn't mean you get reimbursed the $20, that would be awkward.
Yeah.
Well, it's also awkward for a restaurant, so if you're a restaurant owner, guess what? If you have government employees taking lunch there, make sure you stick them with a mandatory tip. That's the only way you're going to get it.
Okay, we have a couple department heads here. Did you have some? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to highlight, I'm not sure if CSAC does it, but they, I know RCRC reimburses any travel or any hotels or anything of the like, and so I know that there's a document they always give, and that's why, you know, I just wanted to highlight that for some of these, and I'm not sure if CSAC does that, too.
You know, I should look into it, I just never asked to get a reimbursement for it, but I know RCRC, the first time I went to a meeting, they do offer that very vocally, but I haven't seen that from CSAC.
If you, like, if you use the county car, or whatever the case may be, they reimburse the county rather than having the county pay for us to go there, so.
Supervisor Spatier.
Yeah, I do want to add one thing is, so I'm glad that there's the digital idea. I, I think that we're going to get a comment that some people don't have the timeframe to submit it in time, and so the digital, just like accessing your emails, makes it a lot easier to be able to submit those things. But I do see a couple of times that I, I get the checks and balances, I think in the long run, ensuring that our auditor controller looks at the policy, looks at the reimbursement request, and makes sure that it falls in line is fine, but I also don't know that our CAO should be looking at these and, and making, it just seems like, how many would you receive? How long is that going to take? I would prefer you focus on the bigger picture stuff than, is your travel reimbursement appropriate versus our auditor controller, which is our elected official to ensure that things follow the regulations and policies? So I'm a little uncomfortable in certain places as to who is the oversight and who does the determination. The way that our structure of our county is, while our CAO is definitely, has a broader reach, our CAO is still a department head of administration, and I feel like the department heads should be working with our auditor controller, not through our CAO, where they can make decisions for other departments. I just, I, that's, I'd love to see our CAO focus on much more important things than just ensuring that the reimbursements are appropriate.
Okay, department heads.
Good morning, Rob Halley, County Sheriff. First off, I'd like to thank Admin, they put a lot of work into this, obviously, and there's some really good parts to it, it's a benefit, some increases. I, I'd simply like to echo Chair Peiska suggesting that this could possibly go to the department heads for some discussion. I do think there are significant changes that will affect some workload, there's some additional reporting processes, approval processes, particularly for department heads. For a department like mine, excuse me, we travel a lot, this is going to matter. It is going to change some things, particularly the, the overnight stay issue, we use that frequently, and our people are used to being compensated or, or at least receiving per diem for those, so. Just that, in short, there are enough changes, I think it'd be a good benefit for the department heads to get a chance to roundtable this and give suggestions back prior to the board approving it. That's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you.
I think it's afternoon.
Almost.
Almost, okay. Good morning, then. Well, this is Doug Gerhard, I'm the Air Push Control Officer with the Lake County Air Quality Management District, my short name again, and I, I had a whole write-up, and then they covered most everything I was going to write, you know, to say to you. And, but in summary, overall, I really liked the policy update, you know, there, the information, the additional bringing pay and everything up to the modern par with what other districts pay, what other counties pay. We do lose people over funding and these issues all the time, so someone else pays double what we do. So it's, it's an issue that, we definitely appreciate that it's coming forward and, and being brought up. Now, there's, there's a couple issues I'm bringing forward, just because as a, an air district, we are not County of Lake, we are a separate legal entity, so there's some, some oddities with the policies, and, and you actually just covered that, which is one of the authority issues. Health and safety code, authorities can't be delegated to a non-air district agency, so that ability to have the approvals of things is, is a little challenging for us. So, you know, we've had a, a good discussion with Mr. Carter and, and come up with a solution, and I think we're on the same page, and going forward, we'll, we'll work with them, but there may be some deviations from these, from the policy, however it ends up finalized because of the legal health and safety code issues, that kind of prevents some of that sharing information, you know, that crossing over of, of authority and, and other things. So same-day travel, of course, that's an issue, you know, it's a concern. We do a lot of one-day travel events, trainings and things, and not being able to reimburse is, is, you know, it's a challenge. Staff definitely doesn't appreciate that, but, you know, it is what it is. There may be some other things in the future, but we'll cross those bridges as we come to them, so with that, I'll, I'll leave it at that and say I definitely appreciate working with Admin to get this, get some of these things clarified before we got here today, so.
Great, thank you.
Can I clarify something?
Sure.
Same-day travel, you could still get reimbursed your mileage, it's just the meals that don't get reimbursed, correct?
It's taxable.
Yes.
Taxable. Gotcha.
Meals are taxable.
Yeah.
Okay, now open it up for public comment. I don't see anybody in the Zoom room, and no one's coming up in the chambers, so we'll bring it back to the board. And it was my suggestion, if we have consensus, to give this back to the department heads at their meeting later this month to have a discussion and bring it back with some more revisions possibly.
I agree.
Yeah. Okay, consensus on that. That's, yes.
Yes, Scott DeLeon is on the call, if you wish to take up 7.4 before lunch.
And just, just real quick, before Mr. Carter leaves and Ms. Hutt leaves, the, was there consensus for, I believe there was consensus for changing the Board of Supervisors section? There was another item that we also asked about changing that I can't...
CAO part.
Yeah, the CAO, just wondering if there's a consensus to having the auditor controller or having that reviewed, that it's not the CAO?
It's an admin policy, not an auditor policy, so we'll have to look into it, though.
Good, look into it, there's consensus to look into it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And make sure it works for...
No, I'm not trying to put more on the CAO at all.
Yeah. And making sure that it works for other districts and other electeds.
If it helps out, I'm very willing to make it the deputy CAO.
That's awesome, because that's not me either. Thank you, Board.
Thank you so much, and thanks for coming in. And we can go to our 7.4. And we can go to our 7.4 item, consideration of resolution approving agreements for the purchase of Right Away for the South Main Street Sota Bay Road Improvement Project, and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the purchase agreement on behalf of the County of Lake, and we have Director DeLeon.
Good morning, thank you, I appreciate you squeezing me in before you take your lunch break, Scott DeLeon, Public Works Director. Today's item is a resolution that approves the purchase agreements for three properties for our South Main Street Sota Bay Road project, and it authorizes the Public Works Director to execute the agreements and complete the purchases. This is a project that was, was around before I took over in 2010, we have about eight properties remaining, and we're slowly making progress on completion of this Right Away acquisition, and today, today's item will move us to. So happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Spatier.
I just wanted to ask again, I believe you said 2020, was it 2024, 2025 is when PG&E is planning to potentially start the undergrounding?
So we're looking at 2024 for the underground, and, and then the road widening project to follow the following year.
Okay, awesome.
Supervisor Green.
And just to clarify, the only utilities currently proposed for undergrounding as part of that would be the PG&E?
We are, we have AT&amp;T and, and PG&E.
But no water, no sewer, right? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Not seeing any, we'll bring it back to the board.
I offer the resolution.
Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Green.
Aye.
And Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
Thanks. Okay, it is 12:01, should we take our lunch now and come back for our 1 o'clock item?
Do it.
Yes, and then we'll have, after lunch, we have calendars, 6.9, 6.10, and closed session. What? Yeah.
Do we want to release Sam into calendars now, or?
We have a 1:30 item, right?
We have 1 o'clock and 1:30.
Oh, I missed that one.
Yeah, okay, lunch.
I'm at 1 o'clock.
Madam Chair.
We also have the extra item to discuss.
Oh, the extra item, yes. All right, welcome back. We will start up again with our 6.9, 1 PM, consideration of County, Lake County PEG Board Annual Presentation, Supervisor Spatier.
Yes, and so we should be getting a document shared here. We do an annual PEG Board meeting, I'll try to convey the previous presenter, which was Ed Robey, who would continuously come to the county to present and let you know what's been done in the past years and what's being planned. Just to be blunt, this is part of the annual process in order to get the payments and dollars that come from each jurisdiction, I will also be doing the same presentation this evening for Lakeport, and have already done this presentation to the city of Clear Lake, so if we can move forward, please. And so here are our current board members, some of it has changed since the last time, I should have probably updated that, but we have from Clear Lake, David Claffey, from Lakeport, Michael Froyo, I'm the representative for the County of Lake, we have replaced Brock Falkenberg with Kevin Mack, who also works for LCOE, who's their IT tech, used to work over at Knott County Unified School District as well, and so has a great expertise and understanding of both education and technical stuff. We are still looking for one more applicant to fill the vacancy that Denise Lustelow was no longer able to serve, so definitely, please fill out an application if you are interested in joining PEG, or reach out and contact me and I'll help you out with the process. Our station manager is Thomas DeWalt, the station, as you may or may not know, is stationed over in the city of Clear Lake City Hall, and our chief editor is Adam Giordino, if we can move on. So our budget for 2022-23, we are currently working on our budget, that should, the initial budget for 2023-24 should come out next week during our meeting, but our revenues are $32,500 from the city of Clear Lake, $8,000, city of Lakeport, $2,000, county of Lake, $15,000, that's under the agreement that we currently have, and if we can move on to the next, our expenses are $33,000, as you could see, it is $500 more than our current revenues, so we're trying to work on those things. Our station manager gets paid $12,000 a year, our editor $4,800 a year, and our facilities and insurance costs us $8,000 total. And the work that we've been doing, that you remember in January, I think it was January, I approached the board with a work to provide a videography for the MACs, that was part of trying to enhance our, our revenues as well, and as, as an update, this Monday, we have all of the equipment, I know that Sam Houston's been working really hard, as well as Thomas DeWalt, to put it all together, we will be doing our first test of all of the equipment this Monday at the PEG TV, we want to make sure to streamline it and getting it at, as smooth as possible before we start working with the MACs, and it has taken us a while to not only collect and get everything approved by the board, as far as all of the equipment needed for the MAC videography system, but it's also been putting all the equipment together, as you know, Sam Houston is a very busy individual, and so is Thomas DeWalt, and so finding the time to be able to put it all together has taken some time. So we have not yet started that, if you can move on, please. Then we have a capital budget, the capital budget is a 1% pass-through, the 1% comes from the MediaCom cable bills, we currently get approximately $58,250 per year for that, and our expenses at this moment is $64,938 that we had anticipated, we still have approximately $300,000 in that capital budget, so while you do see that the expenses are higher than the revenue, we've collected quite a, a large sum to purchase equipment. We can only use capital budget for equipment purposes or potentially purchasing of other things, I know there was talks in the past to get a van in order to move the equipment, things like that, but not for operational budgets. Our current activities is to support local events, we do have a sound system that is available to every jurisdiction, the one who uses it the most, but we keep offering it to ensure everyone else can access it, is the city of Clear Lake, it does come with a sound man or sound person who understands and has the technical know-how to work the sound equipment, because it is not just a plug and play, it is a very professional system. We are offering that videography for the MACs through the mobile AV unit, and we're doing our best to create new revenues so that we can continue with the current agreement and not have to request our jurisdictions, both cities and the county, to increase their contributions. We did create a new website, lakepegTV.com, where you'll find all of our stuff that we have recorded, whether that be Lake Life, whether that be our, our meetings right here that we're doing currently, the city of Clear Lakes, or other meetings that we are recording and putting out on our Zoom and other affiliated sites. For future activities, obviously, we want to fill our vacant seats, it's always nice to have a full board, and also make sure that we have a quorum when we meet, we are always attempting to work with schools, it's been our goal in the past, the problem with schools is to keep the staffing that understands and wants to engage with PEG TV. With Kevin Mack coming on board, I think that we have some added extra momentum to hopefully get some of those things started, but again, it's about continuity and ensuring that that can happen. Talked to you about increasing our operational budget, we're always increasing our membership and viewers, in fact, our online stuff that we've been doing is very easy to track and definitely showing that there's more and more people that are paying attention to what we're posting up on our website, and we have been working really hard, especially, I would say more so than in the last six months, after getting all of the equipment required by Lakeport City Council for their chambers, to also be able to go and live-feed directly to PEG, so that their city council board, or city council meetings can be livestreamed for their, their constituents, just like it is right now for ours. And that is pretty much the PEG update that I wanted to give for you, and if you have any questions or comments.
What are the requirements for, you know, one of the vacant seats, or is it just?
No requirements whatsoever, the open seat is public member. I believe that both of them are public member, I don't know that the one for education is forcefully meant to be education, but we wanted to make sure to continue to have education with the seat to get their perspective and their connections for that.
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, on the third slide, I see the cities and the county, about $7,500 in revenues, that's not earmarked out of the total, is that memberships or something like that, just lesser income?
I'm sorry, what was that?
On, on the third slide, total revenues 32.5, I'm counting about 25 total as listed for the cities and the counties, so maybe there's about $7,500.
We do get some donations and we do have some memberships, and so there is additional income that comes in, I didn't put all the line items for our revenues, but yes, I put all the, the major expenses and the major revenues.
And then the potential for videography agreements, certainly cool, when people have the technical skills, is that limited to like public agencies that would contract, or private parties can reach videography agreements as well?
So we are working on agreements to go outside of government contracts and education contracts, the idea being that if you get us for the work, the content will come back to PEG. In fact, we did have a meeting a while back with our museums, who wanted us to purchase equipment to do videography for, I forget what the exact title of it, but it was history-based interviews with folks from our community, but they were nervous about providing us the content to put back on PEG, they wanted to keep it for themselves, and we, we weren't able to approve that because it doesn't make sense for PEG to provide funding for something that doesn't return to PEG. Our goal is to provide content to the community about the community, or just content made by the community, and so we weren't able to meet those guidelines. So as long as there's content that comes back to PEG, yes, we, we are working so that it goes outside of nonprofit, outside of government and education entities.
But if you could reach, for example, licensing agreement, Creative Commons or something like that, there's nothing currently that would prohibit content posting on the PEG platform, but a, a third party that wanted to get some content posting on their website or platform or something like that, does PEG have the ability right now to either license through Creative Commons or create an agreement where you can do dual posting to PEG and then whatever the other person wants to post on?
I'm going to, I, I got a little lost with, with the echo that suddenly was in my ear, I, let, let's have a conversation about that, I, I don't, content needs to obviously be made by individuals, we definitely don't want to break any copyright rules, there are, like some of the things that you see when we're on break or when we're at lunch, those are all copyright-free sourced materials that we can utilize and put on PEG, or we got the rights to putting it on PEG because it was created content locally, or content created locally, but we do want to follow copyright laws, and so anything that's ours, we also have the ability to maybe provide to others to showcase, but again, let's have that conversation because I think it, the details are important, and so everything is different.
I totally look forward to a conversation on that, it, it's similar to, you know, KPFZ, they, they have stuff, goes out over the airs, goes out over the stream, but certain programmers may want to podcast it or put some of those assets on, on different platforms, so I see it kind of in that same realm, we, we can, we can absolutely serve multiple platforms with the content, so thank you for that info, and we will take a side discussion.
Yep.
Okay. Have anyone, anyone from the public? I just need to get promoted to panelist. Oh, no, I was late.
And while we're waiting for that, just want to add, we are always looking for content creators, you can approach PEG TV, we do have equipment that can be leased from us so that you can go ahead and make those, that content, that is our number one goal, is without the content, the entertainment value of PEG TV lacks, and while it's amazing that we can put our meetings and other council member meetings, maybe that is not the average entertainment that folks are looking for, it does keep you informed, but we are definitely looking for local videographers, video editors, and more to participate in PEG TV.
Okay, I'm going to close public input, not seeing any, and bring it back, this is discussion.
Just the presentation.
Okay, all right, well, then we will.
And after this, I will be going to Admin Office to look for a check, which is, I believe what Ed Robey used to do.
Okay. So then we can take up item 4.1, the extra item, we ready for that?
Yeah.
Consideration of extra item, we did that, consideration of letter to Kearns and West regarding the Russian River Water Forum.
Okay, yes, I put this together after our meeting yesterday, we had, well, actually before, I had a call from some folks from Lake Pillsbury, Lake Pillsbury Alliance, and they noticed on the roster for the Russian River Water Forum, and the meeting, the first meeting's on May 17th in Ukiah, they noticed on the roster that Lake Pillsbury Alliance was listed as the secondary or alternate, well, myself and Supervisor Sabatier are commonly the primary or the alternate, and we had requested from the Russian River Water Forum that they allow Lake Pillsbury Alliance to have their own seat at the table, commonly it's basically Lake County, kind of with all of the other interested stakeholders and parties that, you know, it doesn't seem like there's any more than one Lake representative, and we just feel that there should be another, and they should have their own preference with the, they're actually the area where the headwaters, you know, are, I guess, accumulated from the Beres, the snow mountain in the hills, so when the water flows, either it's Russian River or Eel, they don't consider this basin, so we feel that it should be. Basically, the letter just asks that they allow, or, yes, allow Lake Pillsbury Alliance to have their own seat. This all came from, we all met with myself, Supervisor Sabatier, and Anita Grant, when she was here, met with Kearns and West, they took all the stakeholders' comments, interests, history of the, you know, the Potter Valley Project, and just took into consideration what we thought of it, and then collaborated this other group, so that's basically what this letter is requesting.
Supervisor Spatier.
And I, I want to add something that I know Supervisor Crandall and myself discussed this the other day, yesterday, I believe it was, and one of the key points that I think is important is, we appreciate Lake Pillsbury Alliance and their voice, but to be an alternate to Lake County, they can't speak for Lake County, and that, that I think is where, that's problematic, but we also want to see multiple seats being able to represent Lake County, and the way that Supervisor Crandall is proposing this, I am in full support.
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, supporting the item as it's brought, but man, this is light on Lake County, so just a question, no limit on tribal seats, but I don't see Lake County represented there. Is that a territorial thing, or?
The territory for the area, I think it's, you know, I thought it was Upper Lake at first, the Hebbymetal Tribe, then I found out the area for artifacts and, you know, any type of tribal historic preservation area, the map shows Robinson, but I, I kind of consider it both of the tribes per se, but again, I, they haven't been at the table, I've talked to both tribes, still hasn't come to, yeah, a situation with that, and so a lot of the tribes on the Russian River area are starting to come to the table, but that's, of course, Mendocino County tribes, so, yeah.
Okay, anything from the public? Not seeing any hands up, bring it back to the board for action.
So, let's see, where did I put? Where did I put? Madam Chair, I move to approve the letter to Kearns and West confirming that Lake Pillsbury Alliance is not ideal as an alternative for Lake County and should be considered as a member to the Russian River Water Forum Planning Group.
Second.
Oh, Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I may add and authorize the chair to sign said letter.
Oh, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks, Lloyd.
Or else I would have no signature.
Okay. We can do calendars now? Who is ready?
Well.
I'll go ahead and go.
Okay.
So, General Report did go on a site visit last week with PG&E, out to the PG&E site in South County. Every year they have, and this is out on the Butts Canyon GI Thermal site out on Butts Canyon that is monitored by PG&E at this point. But they were out there doing some work with our, I think it's the Ag Mechanics, the Ag Class, went out and did a bunch of testing, obviously, the local species out there, looking at, you know, the botany, the flower, everything that's happening out there, kind of giving a tour also and talking about the science of monitoring that site. So that was a good site visit. I've been on the site plenty of times, obviously saw it before and in its current condition. But that was a, that was a good day to spend out there with the young youth. Obviously, always talking about opportunities with the sciences, you know, through the Ag Department, you know. So that was, that was a good one. Just spend time with kids and also the PG&E site. I did see something that I did not know they had out there. They have a large water storage facility out there. I think they work with Cal Fire. There may be some potential for that. No, they got a big water tank off to the side. So I'm not sure what they're doing with that, but it's water storage. And we're always thinking about other places to get water during fires. So there is something there, so enjoy that. Obviously, always take opportunities with PG&E or any other things that, you know, with all the work that they're doing here in Lake County, obviously, and concerns we have. So anyway, spent time with them. On Friday, which was the 28th, had a short call with CAO, but then moved into the weekend and, let's see, what was the 29th? 29th, I attended my event in Sacramento, 30 spent time here and.
How was your walk?
The walk was good, yeah. It was, hey, great time to do it because it wasn't too hot. But a lot of support, a lot of things. It was not 105 degrees over there, so that was good and a great turnout for the event. This week, obviously, just back here with the board meeting on Tuesday. Obviously, we have our meeting tomorrow, our workshop. We'll make sure to be there right on time. And it was confirmed, I was coming to Lakeport for a minute. I went right past that, did everything else. I'm like, oh, man, it is in Lower Lake. So appreciate that. They have started the project in the cemetery in Lower Lake, the one with the Lower Lake Action Committee Group. There is some work being done there. You know, there's going to be, I can't remember how many trees, but quite a few coming down just to help that area. The Lower Lake Cemetery District and other things in that area have, you know, always been something that has been brought up as an issue in there. So I'm glad that we're able to get some of the work done. I know the Lower Lake Action Committee Group, Russ Kramer's working closely with some other organizations to get it cleared out there. It's one of the larger ones in Lake County. And, you know, it's just glad to see that work being done. And it's so close to the school there too, with some of the other trees kind of bordering those lines. So excited to see that work done in South Lake County. And so, yeah, I don't think I got anything else at this point. So for some reason, everything slipped my mind. If I remember something, I'll go from there.
You're golfing?
Yeah, well, I do have golfing this weekend, but it's all right.
My turn. Not on my calendar, but we did get a notification today through a press release from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service that the pending application to emergency list, the Clear Lake Hitch is endangered under federal law. It will not happen. U.S. Fish and Wildlife has decided not to do that. They are continuing their ongoing reanalysis of all things Clear Lake Hitch. They are still the lead agency for the Clear Lake Hitch Strategy Agreement. And in their press release, they do note they've allocated funding to continue that work. And so, so it is a little bit of a bit of news today. And, but that is not going to change anything as far as their ongoing listing investigation. Certainly doesn't change anything as far as our county's commitment to move forward on this. And so just wanted to highlight that. On tonight, looks like Senator McGuire will be having a Zoom Town Hall talking about wildfire on this time. So you can probably find him on Facebook and also on his state senate webpage. You'll be able to watch that. And that is from 6:30 to 8:00 PM tonight. So if you're interested in wildfire, Senator McGuire wants to hear from you. Tomorrow, we're having our special meeting for the Rules of Procedure down in Lower Lake. Looking forward to that. I see a meeting on Thursday for Continuum of Care. I don't know that I've seen an agenda yet. Friday, the event that was mentioned this morning for missing and murdered Indigenous people today. I did hear Tribal Health, I had the wrong address. So I just want to clarify for people, it's at the Parallel Drive location. That will be happening on Friday, 1950 Parallel Drive here in Lakeport. And that runs from 2:00 to 7:00 on Friday. And that is about what I got.
Go ahead.
Just kind of want to go over a couple of things from what I did last week. I know that I have been invited to be a part of the Technology Governance Committee, which I appreciate being at the table for the discussions they're having. We're reviewing our email policy. Everyone seems to be holding on to their emails, including ones that, do you want to go out to lunch type of emails? And it makes it really difficult when we get PRAs where there's 10,000 emails to go through and maybe 100 of them are relevant to the search that we're doing. And so we're trying to figure out a policy that would help to eliminate how much of an effort it takes when a PRA comes in. Difficult conversation to go through, having to think of everyone's different state guidelines on what to keep, how long to keep and things like that. But I think that we're making some headway to figure out what an email policy might look like. In First Lake Commission, we were reviewing our budget in that week for 2324. And part of the emphasis for first five, one of the biggest factors and issues for being prepared for school is a social emotional situation with our kids. And so we will be focusing on that and looking to provide grant funding to those able to provide services to help the zero to five with that. So I do want to at least prepare the board. I think we'll be okay, but we'll see what happens. Justin Gaddy, who is the current Executive Director of Hope Rising, has submitted his resignation letter. He will be resigning on May 12th. We do have some important programs that Hope Rising is still a part of, especially what Tina Scott brought to us, the Smart Start Bright Future, which focused on Canockta Unified School District to provide different pillars from after school for our elementary schools, all the way to 10,000 Degrees, an agency that supports and provides information and speaks to our high school students about going to college. Those things need to continue. As you know, we were working with Senator McGuire to get that program started. There is funding left over and there is somebody from Way to Wellville who is willing to take on that role temporarily until we do find an executive officer for Hope Rising. Just wanted to at least alert you that there may be a few hiccups as we do the transition. There also, Hope Rising was in charge of Hope Center in the city of Clear Lake. That hopefully before Justin Gaddy's final day will have been transferred to Adventist Health. We've been working on that for the last, I want to say, five or six months to get everything aligned. And so Adventist Health will be taking over Hope Center in the city of Clear Lake. And I appreciate the hospital willing to provide such a service for the community as well.
They're going to take it over permanently?
Yeah, they own the building already, but they weren't the ones providing the services. All those funds were coming through us, through Behavioral Health. But now they will be taking that over. So that'll be their second shelter that they are now running with the first one being Project Restoration in Lower Lake. So that's, that's a brief summary of last week. This evening, I will be in the city of Lakeport doing the same PEG presentation I provided to this board. Tomorrow, looks like a busy day. And then right after 3 o'clock, if we finish at 3 o'clock, there is an invitation to continue speaking about some housing opportunities. So I'll be taking part in that meeting. And on Thursday, starting off my day as usual with the judge's breakfast, I'm meeting with the city of Clear Lake. We got an initial design for the skate park. I will be blunt, I am not super excited about the initial design. Let's see if we can get some extra things added in and make it a little bit more attractive. But looking forward to those discussions. And obviously, the end product will be the end product. Right now, it's still in the, in the design phase. There is a Blue Zones Steering Committee meeting that I will be taking part of. And there is a Continuum of Care meeting later on that afternoon. And the agenda did come out, I believe, yes, not yesterday, maybe it was yesterday, but I know that the agenda has been provided. And then that evening, I'll be at the City of Clear Lake City Council meeting just to keep up with what's going on there. On Friday, I am meeting with some Blue Zones members as well as some other entities to continue talking about. And I'll be very cryptic, just something I'm going to be bringing to the Board of Supervisors, I'm hoping on, is it May 9th? May 16th? It'll be one of those. But that'll be coming back. So I think that's all I have. And I lost track of where I was on my calendar here. Saturday will be the Robert Verramontes Soapbox Derby. Or, sorry, Robert Verramontes Memorial Soapbox Derby that will be happening in the city of Clear Lake. When we punch Dam Road Extension from the courthouse and the college area, all the way to 18th Avenue, closer to where the hospital is. That was a nice downhill. And our first thought was this would be really fun to do a soapbox derby on. Eventually, the soapbox derby started. And annually, there is a wonderful, fun day of racing down the hill. And if your brakes don't work, don't worry, there's hay bales. But hopefully, the brakes should work. But it's a fun day. Be there at 7:30 in the morning to 9:00 AM if you want to register and get your vehicles inspected. And then expect us to get started around 9 o'clock with the downhill races. And then I'll be back here on Monday to discuss our agenda with our CAO. I have a PEG Board meeting on that evening. It should be in the city of Clear Lake. And again, we will be practicing using the AV unit that we have been discussing and then back here on Tuesday.
All right, special Board of Supervisors meeting tomorrow in Lower Lake. I'm glad I know that now because I one time parked here like at 8:40, like 8:45 and ended up. So I'm just glad we, I know. So East Region Town Hall following that. CSA number two, Spring Valley. I haven't been to a couple of them, so I want to make sure I get to this one, definitely. Thursday, I have an event at the Upper Lake Middle School. It's in regard to Native American adolescents. And it's like a motivational day, so I'll go and speak there. Friday, of course, I have the NACO Leadership Course that I'm taking. Also going to the Lake County Tribal Health Event for Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women's and Peoples. Monday, CAO meeting. And in the evening, the first SURF meeting will take place basically to just, you know, get everything started, determine their dates to, you know, meet, determine who's the officers, things of that nature, just to get rolling. So, and then back here Tuesday.
Okay. Tomorrow, I'm going to Lower Lake. Sounds like you guys are going to meet me there.
Good to know we're all be in the same place.
Thursday, the Sota Bay Corridor Project, which was our Fire Safety Council evacuation grant for the Sota Bay Corridor is underway. So we're meeting with that contractor. And then we've got a meeting with CALOES about the CDAA tree mortality funds. Then another meeting with our climate resiliency officer and Director DeLeon about, and I think, is she in here? We're supposed to be adding Chief Duncan to that too, a discussion about the air curtain burner. I'm going to try and make the Blue Zones meeting too this time. Friday morning, I have a Zone of Benefit meeting, which I may or may not be able to make, but I've already discussed that with Director Turner. And then I am going on a District Five tour with Ben Wrinkleman. So I'm really excited about that. Going to show him all my great, all my great places in D5. Saturday is a hugely exciting day in Cobb. The Bike Monkey Eight-Hour Race is coming back for the second time since the Valley Fire. So this will be year two on the new trails. Starts at 8:00 AM, goes until 5:00 PM. You can start your last lap at 4:00. You want to get as many laps as you can in that timeframe. And so we've got all ages racing, all different categories, including my child, who's going to be doing that with some of her friends. And also her coaches are on another relay team. So it's going to be really fun. And then Sunday are the state champions championship. It's the champ race for the NorCal League. And all but two of the high schoolers from the Middletown Composite Team, which includes Lower Lake too. And actually, it's open to all kids, all high schoolers and middle schoolers in the county. So all but two made it to the state champ ride. So that'll be Sunday. And then back here, I've got my meeting with CAO Parker, but I thought I had something else Monday afternoon, but maybe I'm getting all my Mondays mixed up. And then back on Tuesday. So then we've got our 1:30 item. Does anybody need to take a break before we get into this? We're good? Okay.
You got 30 more minutes based on your journey.
Yep. Okay, we'll come on up. Director Turner and get to the item. This is our 6:10 item, 1:30 PM. Public hearing continued from April 18th and April 25th, 2023. Consideration of Draft Ordinance Amending Chapter 5 of the Lake County Code relating to exempt agricultural building permitting for temporary hoop structures for horticulture and crop protection. Brought to us by Community Development and Director Turner.
I know. My seat is, seat is diminutive, but I am not. Good afternoon. Maria Turner, Director for Community Development. Also, I have our chief billing official here, Bill Collins. Johanna just passed out a diagram that I will address shortly. On April 18th, the board directed in a public hearing that staff separate the section of the Resolution of Intent Wording for the proposed ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance, separate out the section that was for temporary hoop structures for cultivation and move forward with that as its own draft ordinance while the other sections of the potential amendments were going through environmental review separately. So that draft amendment or that draft ordinance was presented to you at the next week's meeting, which was last Tuesday. And I'm sorry, I was out ill. I slept through the whole thing, but I watched it later. So thank you for powering through my absence. And at that meeting, there were a number of topics of discussion that you'll now see reflected in the draft, the further amended draft ordinance that you have before you today. The areas of discussion were whether or not this ordinance would apply to all agriculture or just cannabis. Discussion on acceptable tubing materials, aluminum versus. discussion on acceptable tubing materials, aluminum, uh, versus PVC or and/or, the spacing of the hoop structures, and the addition of surety bonds similar to those that are required for hemp. Regarding the all agriculture versus cannabis only, um, currently in our, in our Chapter 5, uh, we, we require a building permit for any structure over 120 square feet. This is, uh, these include any agricultural buildings, residential, commercial, industrial, any type of structure over 120 square feet requires a building permit, except for one category currently housed in Chapter 5, which is our agricultural exempt structures, which is typically our barns, uh, limited to storage of farming implements, feed, livestock, chickens, cows, they can all stay in there too. That's the only one that, that is exempt. It has certain criteria, uh, including minimum lot size, things like that, uh, and then if the applicant meets all those, if the proposed, uh, structure meets all those criteria, then it is issued an exempt building permit or an agricultural exempt building permit. They do not have to pay the fees for a building permit. They're only pretty much paying for a zoning clearance so that planning and it can make sure that the involved stakeholder agencies such as EH Water Resources have all signed off on it. The draft ordinance you have before you today would create another type of agriculturally exempt structure. This would be temporary hoop structures used for horticulture and crop protection. Now, it's important to note that this ordinance can, this draft ordinance would, it contains criteria and requirements that are placed there to get, um, gleaned from a number of other counties, but also, uh, sort of distilled through the review of our, of our building division to make sure that these structures would achieve minimal safety requirements. Because keep in mind, this would also, if you have an exempt agriculture building permit, then that means we don't have engineered plans to make sure that your building is supposed to be or designed to be constructed safely, nor do we perform any inspections to make sure that that structure is safe and meets code. And so, the criteria that we'll go over that, that are listed in, in the ordinance are there to minum, to ensure safety. One of the, uh, I, I know that last week, the Board's direction was to have this apply to cannabis only, um, which I actually sort of set aside that, that direction so far. I mean, it can be easily changed by just adding wordings, uh, clarifying wording in the ordinance. However, the way it was originally worded, um, by creating a second type of exempt building permits, it can benefit more commercial agriculture than just cannabis. And so it would create an opportunity, um, for other farmers, should they, should they need, should they want a, a hoop structure temporary. If they can meet that minimum health and safety requirements or criterias, then they also would qualify for an exempt permit. At this point, to add the, if the Board would like us to add that specifying language to limit it only to cannabis, then that means anybody who's not cannabis would just need building permits. Additionally, it's also important to note that the health and safety criteria here may result in a not one-size-fits-all. Uh, there may be cannabis or other types of farming, um, businesses that have projects that will not fit the criteria that are listed in here, and so the building permit option would still be available for those. Moving on to the accepted tubing material. Again, this criteria that, the, the development standards that were listed are there for minimum health and safety, specifically the PVC, uh, or similar tubing. There was wording, uh, we added wording clarifying PVC or similar plastic tubing, because in the event that one of these structures collapses while somebody's watering their, their plants inside, uh, the PVC is a lighter material. It's more likely that a person can fight their way out of this structure if they're not getting hit by something that's aluminum and heavier. And so that's why the PVC was, was listed specifically in there. And just for clarification, since it seemed, um, up to interpretation the way it was worded last week, that's why it has been changed to be PVC or similar plastic. Next one, spacing of hoop structures. The Cannabis Task Force started with the Resolution of Intent, which listed 10-foot spacing in between, um, hoop structures. The fire district personnel that were there, uh, were, um, amenable to reducing that to three feet in between hoop structures with a caveat that was not included in last week's wording. If you refer to the diagram that, uh, Johanna passed out, you'll see that there are two rows of hoops, and then, and I brought extra copies for public. If, Bill, would you put that on the podium, please? Um, there are two ru, rows for hoops, and then there are 4290 compliant roads in between those. That is a detail that I have wording to recommend be added into the ordinance so that we don't have thousands of feet of endless rows of, of hoop structures without any spacing in between them that would allow for emergency personnel to access the exact location for an emergency. We need the, the water hoses to be able to get to a fire. We need our EMTs or our fire personnel to be able to reach someone who's having an emergency. Uh, and so the recommended additional wording is for Section 6.25 dot 2 dot 6. Um, and it's to add a clause so that that section will read as follows. Multiple structures have a three-foot minimum fire separation distance between structures with a maximum distance from any exterior portion of the structure of no more than 150 feet from a compliant fire access road. This wording, this sentence is taken straight out of the California Fire Code, Section 503.1.1, which I would recommend adding as a citation into the wording, into the ordinance. The next topic is surety bonds. The Board directed staff to add wording requiring surety bonds similar to the hemp. And so rather than citing the hemp surety bonds, that wording has been added directly into the ordinance as it is before you today. Additional, um, clarifying language was for existing cannabis permatees. For those who have undergone CEQA review for cultivation areas, um, if you've had your permit approved, your major use permit for cannabis cultivation, it's gone through extensive rigorous CEQA evaluation, and the conditions of approval allow for the activity within the already approved areas. So those are your site plans. Um, they show the cultivation area as well as the canopy area, and any area outside of that has not necessarily undergone the CEQA review to determine impacts of the project and the activity on that land. So I am requesting, uh, an amendment to Section 6.25.1. C to read as follows. And this clause just comes in at the very end. But in addition to those conducting agricultural operations, applicants with an approved cannabis cultivation permit from the County of Lake are eligible to apply for an exempt agricultural building permit for temporary hoop structures for horticulture and crop protection within the approved cultivation area. Again, this purpose of the, this addition of wording into the building code is to allow for an exempt permit. So this exempt permit would not go through, would not be in land that has not been previously reviewed for environmental impacts. It would be limited to the area that's already been approved for the permitted activity, uh, the permitted cannabis activity. Other items of interest, a demolition, demolition permit will be, or application will be required at the time that the application for the exempt agricultural structure permit is, is submitted. This is to ensure removal of the temporary hoop structures within the allowed timeframe, which is a maximum of 180 days. There was an inadvertent error in the staff report. While I was working on doing all of these amendments, gathering the data, working with county council and the building and the fire representatives, um, pieces and parts were going in and out of the, the ordinance and the staff report, and I did not see that there is a mention of, uh, including adoption of Appendix C from the California Building Code Title 24, Part 2. We mentioned that that would be included in this ordinance. However, to include that, or that adoption into this draft ordinance would then prompt next week being another first reading. It would be considered a substantive alteration of the ordinance. And so, uh, staff is currently working on an ordinance to adopt Appendix C along with Appendix J, which for totally unrelated reason, we also, um, should adopt. And so that will be coming to you, uh, for your approval, um, in the future, at a future meeting. That concludes my presentation, but I, um, I, both Bill and I welcome any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Supervisor Spatia?
I appreciate the discussion. I appreciate trying to find ways to make this happen. I, I, I feel like, I feel like we're overcomplicating, uh, the situation and now receiving this, that every row is 4290 compliant. I don't wanna say it scares me, but the driveway to the facility, 100%, like that needs to be 4290 compliant, once you have buildings or, or other things that trigger that, but to have 42 compliant roads between rows, I don't know that that is something that our ag has been doing, nor do I know if that's something that they're, I'm not gonna say able to do, but that it would be a simple thing to me. Um, so that part worries me. Um, I know last week we had, um, Rebecca Harper from the Farm Bureau, and I'm not gonna put words in her mouth, but I do remember her saying these regulations would not work for traditional ag, uh, and that this was for cannabis, and now we're back to all, which that's my preference, is that we look at it as a structure, not what's inside the structure, 'cause whether you have bunk beds or a normal bed, if you build a house, the house is still the code of the house, and that's it. Uh, what's inside of it, it doesn't really matter. Uh, that's, that's a different thing. We've done the land use of where it can be done and how it can be done, uh, so I appreciate that we're looking at both, but these guidelines are, are not going to, in my opinion, work, uh, necessarily for traditional ag. Um, and I don't believe that their voice has necessarily been heard as far as the conversation that came from the task force, as this was kind of more intended with the belief that this would be, uh, for cannabis. Um, what, what confuses me is I, I guess at what point is a structure a structure? And I know you and I had this conversation. If it's a three-foot-high hoop house, because all you're doing is growing strawberries, what is the danger potential? What is the issue of just allowing certain things to occur? Once it becomes something that you can walk under, then maybe that's where we look at the, some of these guidelines. Um, but it starts with anything an inch above the ground to 10 feet above the ground or 12 foot maximum, uh, and I just feel like it should start with, once you reach a certain height, maybe a certain width or and both, uh, that at, at this point, it would make sense to have simple, uh, regulations. I, uh, and the surety bonds, um, we already have the surety bonds from the state. Um, and if we're gonna, if we're gonna combine this with ag, I would say we do already have the, the, the reason we had the surety bond for the hemp was in case you go above point 3 THC, where by law we had to go in and destroy it because we needed law enforcement to be involved in the destruction. And so because of that guideline, we wanted to make sure that we had the funds available. Um, to put that on ag or cannabis, when cannabis is already doing the state surety bond, we have code enforcement that can say, hey, this, this is a nuisance. You didn't take care of your hoop house. It looks bad. Uh, please clean it up, or else we go through the normal code enforcement. I think we have something available to us in case that is the case. Um, I'd like to know how we can move forward. Obviously, we're gonna hear from the public. How do we move forward to allow something to occur, and at the same time kick it back and say, can we please make sure we get both voices simultaneously on what would be appropriate measures to take versus, I don't think what's in front of me works. Um, I'll, I'll leave it at that for now.
So looking at this, I, um, looks like it's gonna complicate, complicate the taxable canopy area. So you're gonna have, I mean, unless each row is gonna be a can, taxable canopy spot. So I, confused about that part. Um, we don't have roads like this in the middle of vineyards where somebody collapsed in the middle of a vineyard. They would need assistance by a vehicle. So I, I, I'm concerned about this part also.
Yes. Yeah, so, uh, part of my concerns, uh, differ from a, uh, vineyard to a, a hoop house row, especially if they're 12 foot tall, and you have 100 foot, uh, 100 foot by 20 foot, uh, hoop houses, 12 foot tall is, you know, and I didn't make this, just you know, and I didn't write the 4290 compliance on there, but the fire code does say that it has to be an approved fire access road, uh, 150 feet to, uh, any place on the structure, um, which I do agree with, and I prefer the 10 feet, you know, and, and the whole intent of this was to give them something that would save them time and money, and they could go out and take this and start up their cannabis operation. It's not the, it's not the only way they could go, and if they wanna exceed this, we have no problem with them submitting a building plan, and, and we can do a, a deep dive in the code search for it. Um, the issue that I have with this, you know, is, is if you don't have these roads, say you have a stack and there's none, none of these roads in here, and you just, it's full of hoop houses. They call in and they say, hey, a guy's down in hoop house number 65, and it's in the middle here. So we come in here, you know, fire gets here. For one, they only carry 200, they only have 200 foot of hose on their, on their rigs, what they told me. So they gotta be able to get their hose to it, a, anyplace on there. But the other thing is, you come in here, I start off here, and, and so why do I have a plaque that tells me which one is which hoop house? And if I'm fire trying to get in there, and, and these things are 12 foot tall, so basically it's almost like you're in a corn maze. It's above your head. I can't see across between the vines and see that there's a group of people over there. Oh, I need to go over there. That's where the emergency is. There's all these hoop houses that are just rows of plastic and that are full with the green stuff inside, so you can't see through those and, and where these people are at and where, oh, there's a group of people over there. That must be where the guy's having a heart attack. So it's a little bit different than the vineyard, in, in my opinion.
What if they're not 12 feet tall? What if they're just four feet tall or six feet tall?
Well, the problem is, as soon as they get above your sightline, now it's the same thing. You can't see across, but you know, the, we start out with 10 feet, and they said, well, it didn't give them enough space. So we kind of tried to figure out a way that would allow them to have more on there than, than what they're asking for, but we still need to be able to get fire personnel to them if, if there's an emergency, and also there's, it's not just fire, it's health concerns, things like that. Um, I'm not sure what the fix is. I just, I just can't see that you could put a whole, we could, like right now, I had a guy come in over, uh, over on my way home, you know, I stopped, I tagged him about him moving, uh, dirt. He come in, I kinda showed him the little draft that I'd been working on, and said, hey, if, if, if you go with something like this, we're, we're not gonna have an issue. I haven't been back onto his site, but every day when I drive by, I can see he's got a whole bunch of rows of stacks of those things really close together. So it's, it's, and then at his place, he's got this little small road that goes back in there. And, well, I can understand your guys' issue with, well, they don't send 4290 out to a vineyard. Uh, a vineyard, you just got a bunch of rows of vines there. It's not the same thing as putting up a- putting up a, a structure that's going to protect your plants. Now, you've got combustible materials there. And, and it's not only the combustible materials, but it's also the, the fact that you've got this big area that we can't see into, where somebody's injured or things like that. And we got to get people in there to save them, and then we also got to get them back out of there. And that's the, those seem like the main things for the building department and the intent of the code that we're trying to, you know, I brought some stuff to talk about how I got my code passed, to where we would let these go without a, without a building permit. And it says it's got to meet the intent of the code. The intent of the code, in my opinion, is that we got to have safety, egress in, egress out. We got to be able to get people, if there's an emergency, how to get them out of there and into a, into a safe location to medical care, those type of things.
And then, what about the issue of the taxable area? Because, is that something you can speak to?
Sure. Yeah, part of the application will include a detailed site plan. So we'll be able to use that site plan to, to know how much the area of canopy is proposed. Then, once we're in there verifying in our annual compliance, we will have the radar, or the laser measurements. So we'll be able to, to figure it out.
Okay. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I'm not going to go way down the rabbit hole today. There are clearly ongoing disconnects between our understanding of traditional ag and fire risk and what this might bring. So to rebut plastic film, guess what? Vineyards have tons of drip irrigation, also made of plastics. We're not worrying about that. Maybe we should be. And I'm interested in hearing the comments from the public, for sure, because our direction last week was very clear, whether there are reasons to not follow that guidance, but we were supposed to come back with an ordinance specific to cannabis cultivation only. But whether it's cannabis only or all types of agricultural crops, this, this latest draft, for me, raises still more questions than it answers. I appreciate the hard work of everyone, Ag Advisory, Cannabis Task Force, CDD. But this issue has been handled dramatically differently, county by county. And I don't think we have even scratched the surface of the state of the art of hoop house regulation in the state. And I don't know that it is a great use of time, given the lateness of the season, to attempt to do this as a one-off for hoop houses, when there are other temporary structures people are interested in doing. And we have this ongoing directive to the task force to fix our broader ordinance. I do want to raise the idea for that those people that do have robust hoop house regulations and robust cannabis regulations, the trend seems to be using a programmatic EIR to really drill down into the weeds, if you will, to adopt solutions that don't just make sense from what a structure is and what a structure isn't, but applies some nuance in the various zoning districts of that county. I think this was a worthy effort. I don't know that we can move this forward with all those questions, because if we are, if we are to say that we agree fully with all the application of the 4290s and the concerns raised about height of the structures and plastic films and stuff like that, then I think the broader agricultural community would be right to raise concerns. How is this going to affect agriculture generally, not just cannabis specifically? And I don't want to, like, let cannabis be the guinea pigs for the rest of traditional agriculture, if we do decide to limit it to cannabis only, notwithstanding their heartfelt desire to get something in the, in the ground. But just, for every rule you come up with, there's five different variations on a theme that some grower will come up with. And I've heard about five or 20 of them in the last week. So I am interested in hearing from the public. It's no offense to anybody for the hard work given so far, but it's going to be tough to move this for me today. Thank you.
Okay. Are you ready? Or do you have anything? Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. So we've got people in the chambers, and some hands up in Zoom. We'll start in the chambers. You can come up to the microphone, state your name, and you'll have three minutes. Are you ready for me, Jessica?
I'm ready. Go ahead.
Perfect. Rebecca Harper, Lake County Farm Bureau. So I think there's potentially a few issues with this. First and foremost, it was not the intent of the task force to apply these regulations to all of traditional ag. Had it been, and this is where we would be, I think that'd be a different discussion. But it was not clear during any of the ongoing discussion we had regarding this matter, that these would be applied to traditional ag. Certainly, we could go back and look at it holistically and find something that works for both industries, but that's not the case in this instance. Additionally, with this lovely little map you have here, I'd like you to envision that instead of cannabis, however, however many feet tall hoops you have, that these are little rows of strawberries with two feet tall hoops on them, that are attached by wire or other method into the ground, right? So it would seem extremely ridiculous to me if we had three 4290 compliant roads going through every single strawberry production facility in Lake County. That seems very drastic and extreme. Also, you know, with the theme that that was not the intent of these regulations when we, when we came up with these, you know, standards. So I, I think, I know I've heard from cannabis folks that they really need something this season, if they're going to be able to utilize hoop houses, and I'm, I'm very sympathetic to that. But I think that this really needs to go back to the task force to have a better recommendation come forward, simply because it was not the intent of the task force to apply these regulations to, to all agricultural industries. So it would be complex. I've also heard, I mean, one of the questions I have, and maybe Maria can answer, with regard to cannabis site plans, would be about site plans that are already submitted, right? So if you have site plans that are already submitted, growers that are wanting to use these for this year, that have approved site plans, this, what I've heard from cannabis growers is that it would drastically, you know, change what their canopy looks like. I also think that it's important to consider that nobody who's growing production agricultural products is placing forests of products where they can't walk through and harvest, or perform other production activities, right? So there are rows between strawberries, there are rows between lettuce, because you need farm workers to be able to get in there, to water, to spray, to harvest. And so, there is rightful passage through many of these production agricultural facilities, and I'm sure that it's pretty similar for cannabis, right? It simply doesn't make sense to have a forest of cannabis. What's in the middle would not be getting taken care of, and that's applicable to any agricultural product. So I just urge you to consider some of those things and think through this a little bit. I don't really know what the solution is here, but I would like to see it be kicked back to the task force.
Ooh, on time. Perfect. Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers?
Good afternoon, board. Gosh, you know, a lot of different directions we, we go and come, so I appreciate the idea that we're going to start calling-
Give your name, please.
Oh, sorry, Michael Wagner. I appreciate the idea that we're going to start looking at cannabis as ag, and that the rules and things, that every, all of it kind of goes together, one big cup of tea. At the same time, it's probably not, it's not going to make any kind of sense for anybody who's farming to have giant swaths of land that they can't use. Myself, in particular, I do a lot of site plans and a lot of work with my clients about how do they make a functional site. With this particular scenario, if we look at the amount of road space you'll have to have for that 4290, it is going to change your canopy hugely. And that's not just for the grower or the cultivator, that's for the tax aspect of this as well. When you're subtracting out, you know, 40 to 50% of their area within that site plan, within that diagram that the state and the county both are using, if you subtract out 50% of that, not only is the grower now no longer able to grow or have that canopy, but it also means a huge discount in the amount of taxes that are going to be taken in from that. Without a major change to the site plans, you're going to have a mathematical problem with what's going on, or a change. Maybe it's not a problem, but it's definitely a change. In regards to tubes and plastic, or similar plastics, I think that we're kind of back to the same conversation of last week, which is, plastic is plastic. Unless there's some kind of specialty plastic we don't know about, then we would in turn be creating a, another nuisance or a problem for the environment in requiring to have plastics. When it comes down to the math, the difference between plastic or PVC versus aluminum, aluminum, one-inch aluminum per foot weighs .58 pounds, okay? So for a 12-foot height hoop, which turns into 37.6 total linear feet, that means it weighs 21.89 pounds, that hoop, that single one. PVC in one-and-a-half-inch round, which is what you have to use to have enough structure to it for it to hold, weighs .56 pounds. On a 37.68 length, that turns into 21.1 pounds. So you've got 21.8 versus 21.1. And all I did was Google that. I didn't, like, find any special thing, okay? The, the question about the accessibility is just, these things are made out of sheet plastic. You could take your fingers and shove them through it-
Thank you.
Could I get a real quick question?
Sure.
Just a real quick question. I've heard multiple speakers say this might complicate the, the mapping submitted to the state and/or the county. I'm not clear on that, because the mapping submitted to the state and the county would show a cultivation area, and it may call out canopy within that area, too. If this ordinance were passed, and a grower were to take advantage of this, get a temporary hoop house permit, it would reduce their footprint, perhaps by physical necessity, to less than was shown on the site plan. But isn't that already envisioned? The site plan shows your maximum cultivation area, your maximum canopy. The site plan doesn't bind a applicant or a licensee to grow that, right? And if you growed a lesser amount of weed within the same space, would you not still be compliant with that site plan?
Well, yes, you would still be compliant, but the amount of cultivation area would change drastically. So the amount of taxes that are going to be collected would change drastically.
Okay, well, that's a tax compliance issue, not a site plan issue. All right. Thank you.
I think it's revenue is what he's talking about.
Hi. My name is Kristin Callahan. I am owner-operator of a farm in Middletown, Magic Meadow Farms. We went through the development process, and we're licensed for in, in mixed-site cultivation and outdoor cultivation. So we actually had to adhere to the 4290 road standards to receive our use permit. This, the task force and the building department and the planning department and the, all of the team that's come together here today is to discuss this growing season and this plan. And I feel that it is really important for the growers to be able to access this growing season for these hoop houses, because, yes, it will limit the canopy, but you can always adjust the canopy within the county office with, like, just a little written form saying that we're not going to use as much canopy, this is what we're going to be using, and it's taxed that way. And for the state guidelines, it's about where the, the plant's leaves touch. So if the plant doesn't go into the walkway, it wouldn't be considered canopy, right? So we're just looking at where the plants are growing, and we can adjust that within the, within the guidelines that we already have. I think that the, the focus here today isn't about making cannabis ag. Unfortunately, I actually, I can't believe I'm saying this, but I really want that for us. But right now, we have to figure out how we can keep growers growing, bring in the revenue that they need to continue and to recoup from the previous year's loss. This will give the county more access to more healthy businesses here. Being able to have a nicer, higher quality in Lake County is what growers need to be focused on, because the market is really challenging. So I feel like if we can focus on the sizing requirements in the task force later on, in the ordinance, I think that there are many people working diligently. I know Jennifer Smith and Nora are working in the task force with the building department, the planning department, on these finite details. The surety bond is exceptionally overkill, in my opinion, because we have the waterboard reclamation permit, we have, we have an agreement with the state, we have an agreement with our planners, we have an agreement to ourselves as farmers to be successful. We're not illegal operations. We're here to make our communities better and to provide jobs and opportunities. And I also want to put out there that these hoop houses will provide more jobs to more locals, which we really need, more jobs that are local. Going over that hill every day is challenging. So I want to, I want to just really support this to be passed today for the, and not change anything else, because the more changes that we make, the more taxing it is for the farmers. And we want our businesses to be successful in Lake County, and we want the economy here to get better. And the way to do that is to stop limiting the farmers the ability to farm, and that's across all ag. But in this case, we're not talking about all ag, we're talking about the cannabis farmers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If we don't have any further comments in the chambers, we have hands up in the Zoom room. Our first caller is phone 6205.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I want to thank Bill Collins especially for his comments, and really, all of the supervisors today for bringing up specific concerns. Again and again, the issue of scale mattering, that here in Lake County, we have small mom-and-pop farms, but we're also going to have some of the biggest farms in the state. And so, what Bill Collins spoke to is, can a person, if underneath the structure, see and escape? And I think it's really important, and it isn't clear yet in this discussion today at all, what would work for strawberries and what would work for over 10-foot, 12-foot marijuana plants. I appreciate a lot, all the attention put to the needs for safety, and I think that's absolutely true, that you're, we're talking about something for a large grow that would be like a corn maze, and wouldn't allow people to easily see their way through and escape. And then, I wanted to say that in the recent task force meeting, Andrew Amalon said that he didn't have time to both do his inspections and run the task force meetings. And so, I'd like to just bring more attention to that there's more staffing need here. These are very well-intended aspirations, but more staff is needed to actually make this program work. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have something afterwards? Okay. Next is Richard Durham.
Hello. My name is Richard Durham, cannabis cultivator and realtor. I think we're complicating this way too much. A stick of PVC is 20 feet long. If you make a 10-foot-wide hoop, it brings the height of the hoop down to below seven feet. If you add more, more length to the PVC, it becomes completely unstable. So we're just looking for a simple cover. In my case, I'm a full-time, a full-sun, full-term farmer, and I need my seedlings protected in springtime from frost. So the hoop house would be a small hoop house with a bunch of babies in it. If your plan calls for having 30 of these hoop houses, I think the county would have to assess that separately. But for the small farmer, there's different reasons why you're using hoop houses. And if you're going to do a light deprivation program, in the end, you're going to have to do a real greenhouse, because it's just too labor-intensive to be pulling tarps over hoop houses. So you have to address what the hoop house is going to be used for, and they're probably not going to be used for full-term plants. So I suggest that we go back to the simple idea- So I suggest that we go back to the simple idea that we just need a simple structure for maybe 60 days, 90 days, and let it go at that. It's easy to start extrapolating, say somebody's going to have a forest of hoop houses. That's, I can't foresee that. It would be crazy monetarily. And if you got a big storm and they blew all down in one day, you'd be loving life. So with that, I'll let it go. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Sarah Bodnar. Sarah, we're not able to hear you. You're breaking up. No.
It's not getting better?
That's better.
Okay, I'll try calling. Oh, okay, great. Thank you. I apologize for the poor cellphone reception. I feel a bit like a broken record today and you all probably feel a bit like it's Groundhog Day because we have been here many times now having the same conversation. And as you well know, cultivators need hoops this year. Listening to the presentation today, with all due respect for staff and the many hours that have gone into this, I have to ask the question of who is really making policy? Because there were a number of things put forward today that were directly different than what the board had directed last week and very different than what the task force deliberated. And the recommendations that went through the task force at the board's direction were heard by the ag advisory committee and then the planning commission. And now here in this final hour, we're hearing new things, like it can only be PVC, which was not the recommendation of anyone. And last week, the board said ore-like materials should be suitable and explicitly said. And then additionally, the board direction to apply this only to cannabis so that we wouldn't get hung up with any last-minute opposition that would prevent us from being able to move forward with our crops this year. So I need to call that out and say that it's disappointing to have those things come up and this kind of selective concern about safety and fire. And we had this all go through the review of every county department as well as the fire chiefs. And when we talked about this in the task force, the fire chief specifically confirms that the 4290 road standards don't apply inside agricultural activity or agricultural crops. So inserting that is also kind of going against what we spent many, many months figuring out. So I would recommend that the board stick with its previous drone and our use permit has had to go through, you know, extensive site mapping and roads have been created that accommodate this three-foot spacing. So if...
We're losing you. Okay, I think we'll move on to the next caller now. And the next person we have is Lori Pascarella.
Hi, can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay, hi, my name is Lori Pascarella and I'm a compliance specialist in the cannabis industry. And I'm going to kind of second the stuff that Sarah was saying. It seems like there was a move backwards here with this edit to the draft ordinance. There's a lot of things that were added in that weren't discussed in the last reading that don't match to what was discussed would be changed. So, yeah, it's kind of interesting that it's becoming more oppressive versus working to create a solution for your cannabis farmers. So I think that, I agree that perhaps going back to the last iteration and moving forward from there is a better move. I think that you strayed too far from the path with this iteration and the changes that you've just made. The idea of just plastic is ludicrous because it's not as sustainable. There is no proof that it is any less dangerous or provides any safer environment than aluminum tubing. They effectively weigh the same. The durability is, there's no durability. The plastics snap in high-wind or high-UV situations. They don't last more than a year. So it doesn't make sense in terms of sustainability in a farmer who wants a long-term program and investment and improvements to their farming operations. I think that the county needs to look to what the state is doing and try to stay as close as possible to that. They have put a lot of efforts on their side to making sure that they're making a good farming sustainable solution for cannabis farmers who are doing outdoor crops to allow for light deprivation and additional crop cycling so that we can be more competitive in an industry that is highly competitive and hopefully wrestle it back from the black market and, you know, bring it into where it's fully dominated by legal operators who have good business operations. The other thing that I want to speak to, every one of us has to put together a safety plan, a fire safety plan, and that includes an emergency response plan and how to best interact with our emergency responders. Includes making sure that we have designated people to meet a responder at the gate and guide them to a location. We're not going to let any emergency responder come onto a property and not provide guidance to them. We have no more thing that, our top priority is the safety of our workers in creating a sustainable working environment and a sustainable agricultural endeavor for ourselves. So I think, yeah, again, that's kind of what I have to say on that. I appreciate your time very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer Peskin. Jennifer, you want to unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi there. I'm here today to express my support for updating our local ordinance to match the state regulations, allowing outdoor cannabis cultivators to use hoops. And I also urge the use of ag-exempt structures to dry cannabis. Utilizing hoops without artificial light enables our local farmers to benefit from a cost-effective method that reduces energy consumption and promotes sustainable farming. It's also important to note that ag-exempt structures are already in place, making it a sensible approach to use the existing structures for drying. It eliminates the need for new construction and fosters sustainability. On top of that, using ag-exempt structures for drying creates a standardized process for all ag products, ultimately benefiting our local economy by encouraging flourishing within the downtrodden cannabis industry. With the key support of stakeholders, this proposal has really outstanding potential to benefit our community, but more importantly, the environment. I think it's important that we align our local ordinance with the state regulations so that we can ensure consistency in our regulatory framework and provide a more environmentally-friendly way for our cannabis operators to conduct their business. I urge you guys to take action by passing these amendments today and demonstrate your commitment to supporting a sustainable cannabis industry and fostering economic growth for the community. Thank you guys for listening.
Thank you. Next is phone 1447.
Hello, Chris Jennings, can you all hear me well?
Yes.
Awesome. So, yes, Chris Jennings, I'm in Lake County. I'm going to say something that's going to sound really extreme, but I'm going to explain myself right afterward. Anyone since, oh, the end of 2019 that is being denied an agricultural structure for, say, drying their cannabis for their outdoor farm is being wrongfully, based on 4290 standards, is being wrongfully denied a permit. I would say anyone who is potentially wanting to...
Yeah, so today we're talking about the hoop houses?
I'm getting there, I know, yep, for sure. Sorry. Anyone at the same with hoop houses and greenhouses, I would be willing to pull the code for the farm people, traditional farm, and say, hey, what are you allowed to do? Hoop houses on your farm? And they're allowed to. What we're doing is we're separating cannabis and traditional ag again. And at the end of 2019, the supervisors, including Rob Brown, out of all supervisors, agreed that outdoor cannabis was deemed 4290 exempt and has the same entitlement as the agricultural community as a whole. So if you need a building or a hoop house or any of those things, you're allowed that. So I just don't understand why we're necessarily reverting back from that resolution. I believe Bruno Sabatier was part of that. That's when we lost Jeff Smith, that lost, but he moved on, Rob Brown. It was at the end of 2019. I have the resolution pulled up. I just need to find the signed official copy. So there's plenty of people out there that are, you know, getting 4290 exemptions for their structures, greenhouses specifically, at the end of Jerusalem Grade. I know a person back there that got signed off on hoop houses, greenhouses. And their road, Jerusalem Grade, was deemed 4290 exempt. And we don't have to follow those standards. So I just think, I think there's a bigger issue at hand. And I think we have a lot of newer people trying to advise policy on behalf of the cannabis people who are not aware of what happened in 2019 when some 4290 updates happened. Because it seems every time I get a phone call from a friend or another person in the community saying, I got denied this because of 4290. It's like, they approved 4290 standards in 2019, like, it's there. So I, thank you, Bruno, thanks for Mike Green. Everyone just realizing that this potential update is kind of gotten out of control and there's just a lot more to it. I really encourage everyone to go back and review that 4290 exemption ordinance for outdoor people because my understanding is anyone who is an outdoor gardener who wants to get something that the ag community wants to do, you are 4290...
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
It looks like maybe your hand is still up and also your hand part is still up. Okay, so I will do one last call for public input. Jennifer Smith?
Good morning, board. This is Jennifer Smith. I don't even know where to begin. Again, I think this, somehow we've gone backwards from where we were with the recommendations from the task force. Ultimately, we're an ag product. There's already hoop structures allowed for ag products in the county. I think we're just adding restrictions and additional code that doesn't need to be. I think if we just allow that cannabis be allowed, you know, to use what's on the books, let's just go with that direction. We're letting policy dictate how we actually farm. And there's no other crop out there that is, you know, under such regulation and is having their methodology dictated by policy. There's T-posts in every vineyard. There's, you know, fire trucks that they were going to drive to the middle of a vineyard would have to drive through T-posts. We're not really talking about structures when we're talking about hoops. We're talking about row coverage. These aren't buildings. The risk of, you know, sorry, I'm not making any sense because I'm just flustered by this. Let's just, you know, stick with the fact that we're an ag product. Let's use the hoops that are already impermissible in this county for other ag products and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Lanier?
Hi there, Patricia Lanier with Noble Gardens. I just, I'm having such a hard time. I think just like Jen Smith, just like everyone else, where, you know, the state of California, I believe, issued a letter to the Board of Supervisors several seasons ago saying that cannabis is to be treated as an agriculture-like product. We are only being considered not ag because of federal regulations which are outdated and quickly dying off. That is the only reason that we are not agriculture in the state of California or any other state that is legal as far as medical or adult-use cannabis is concerned. It is federal regulations that is continuing to perpetuate the idea that cannabis is anything other than ag. If any of us were growing any other product besides this plant, this conversation wouldn't be taking up time in government office right now. And I just want to call attention to that. We're being discriminated against. We're taxed at higher rates. We are constantly having to battle all of these policies that make literally no sense. And in the meantime, what's happening is patients are suffering. And that's the thing that seems to continually get lost in this conversation is that we're not just growing strawberries. We're not just growing wine. We are growing medicine that helps people who suffer on pharmaceutical drugs, like myself, like other people. First and foremost, this plant is medicine and it's being prevented from getting to market effectively because of some stigmatized policies that are rooted in racism.
Can you give your comments to the hoop house item, please? Thank you.
Right, the hoop house item is that, and how this is relevant to the hoop house item is that if we were growing anything else, we would be, we wouldn't be having this conversation as to whether or not we'd be able to put umbrellas over our plants. So please, please, let us have this one little olive branch and move forward. We're begging you at this point. We just want to operate. Thank you.
Okay. Betsy Khan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board. I would just like to comment, and I'm not going to get into the specifics of any of this detailed stuff. The reason for carefully structuring the uses of cannabis operations and the way they go about it is because of the additional risks that are involved, the crime levels. People don't go in and steal strawberries. They don't go in and steal wine grapes. There's no alcohol involved. But cannabis is subject to theft and other kinds of hazards. And I would urge the board to apply the precautionary principle in crafting the management of this as we develop all these so-called sustainable operations, not fly-by-night, overnight, quick deals. Let's see who's really investing and making good watershed and environmental decisions. And thank you for the consideration of these thoughts.
Thank you. Okay, we are through our public comment. And we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Spatier?
So I'm going to reiterate, we're looking at a structure policy here, not a land use policy. And I think that a structure is a structure is a structure. And whatever works for the structure, what happens inside the structure, that's part of the land use. So I think that we need to find something that makes sense. I am going to use what someone else has already kind of stated because it's my belief as well. We have an equity program that's part of cannabis. Why does that exist? Because of the history behind cannabis. If we continue to separate what one structure can do versus another structure, we are continuing that inequity that history has created for us to deal with. So land use, we can make differences. Structure is a structure. What's in front of us does not function for everybody. What's in front of us does not function for everybody who would like to use these structures. Um, however, there are some requests to move forward. Um, and I would like to know, I would like to get consensus, doesn't have to happen right now, that we do kick this back so that agriculture and cannabis can come together and say, these are regulations that work for all of us, and there can be tiers of, uh, different heights, require different, uh, square footage, require different type of, uh, uh, of regulations. Once you reach a certain height, you in- intensify the regulations. I don't know. That's not for, for me to create, I'm not the farmer of every single product. Uh, but I just don't think, I, I, I can't, I don't think that splitting structures into, you grow carrots, here's your regulations, you grow strawberries, here's your regulations, you grow cannabis, here's your regulations. We're, we're going to be at this for years to come. Um, so I'd like to offer a suggestion. Um, it sounded to me like, and, and again, this is if the consensus is yes to go and bring it back to, um, uh, the task force to continue discussion on something that works for everybody. Um, because that's the way I, in my heart, I believe it should be. I agree that there are structures, as we speak, there is confusion about structures that have been approved and yet don't, we don't have code for it. I know, uh, in Clear Lake Oaks, uh, there was hoop houses, there was a lot of complaints about that. That was actually based on our recommendation from a prior director, um, during early activation that they had to put their stuff in hoops, yet no regulations for hoops. Uh, we did the farmland protection zone where we required those transitioning from outdoor to more, um, mixed light and indoor to be in hoops. No, no hoop requirements, no hoop ordinances to say exactly what that looks like or permits. I don't know how many people actually took advantage or are, are doing that, but we created those rules to force people to be with hoops. Um, we have hoop houses, if you travel enough around, you can see that they are an agricultural land. I don't want to create a problem for those that have already created things, and I think that's where that conversation needs to happen of what exists, what are the regulations that match what already exists so that that can come back to us. However, if that's going to happen, I'm willing to move forward currently with something for cannabis. I would say the majority of 1 through 14 can stay exactly the same, I agree with those, except for two. One, PVC or similarly weighted tubing. That way they can use whatever new material happens to come out tomorrow, as long as it's similarly weighted so that it's not 100 pounds, but it's around the 20 pounds or whatever it is that it might be. And six, I don't know why there needs to be a three, so between the, the, the length, you have 100 feet, I believe 100 feet was the maximum, so you have 100 feet, yes, I get that, three-foot section, another 100 feet. But between that, you have 75 feet between each exit that you can access, why do you have to have a three foot between the next one? Because if you're all alone, no matter if you have three foot or not, good luck finding somebody if you're all alone. And if you're in a group, you're going to have somebody waving down where they should come to go help somebody. So I don't think the three-foot section along the lengths matter, as long as there's a three-foot section between the width so that you have 100 foot, three feet, 100 foot, three feet, and then, uh, they can be side by side, uh, going down because you still meet the regulation of 75 feet to an exit. Um, those are the only two things that I would, I would say we could look at changing that simplify some things, uh, but I would really like to see something where this is an ag structure, and it, as soon as we start nitpicking, we are creating inequities, just like for you, here's your code for your house, and for you, we're going to choose a different code for your house, even though the house is exactly the same. Uh, we can't decide how to, um, build code for a structure by looking at what's going inside, that is the choice of the farmer of what goes inside. Um, the land use is the important part for where and when and how. Uh, so that, that, that would be my offer on how to move forward in order to do something, but it needs to go back to the task force to get something that, uh, works for everyone.
So my issue here is that when you brought this to us, was it last fall or late summer? Um, Oct- when was it, September, October?
Probably.
Okay. But we have to be consistent in our ask. We did not ask the task force to come up with something that's universal for all traditional-
If, if you read my intent, it was for all.
Okay, but it was, it was coupled with the drying shed, so this is-
Which was for all.
Okay, but this is what they've been working on, and, um, I think the intent was always for cannabis, though.
Never was for cannabis, that's why I asked for the ag advisory board to review it and for the cannabis task force to review it, because all of the above needed to review it. The idea was a simple, all-surrounding regulation that worked for everybody. I spoke with different groups to gather all the information, then said, this is not the final product, but here's a place to start. Um, or else, let, let, let's start over, but the idea was to let them hash out the details. I just got some information from the different groups and put it together, but it was always about both.
Okay, it's, that's not how I recall, but you're the one that wrote it. Um, so anyway, we've gone this far, we've had over six months of work with all of these different groups, and I, I think we need to figure out how to move forward. And I do agree that, um, you know, with the difference between PVC and aluminum, I, I don't see much of a difference there. Um, again, we can still improve it, but i- if we don't do something now, then this is done for the season, and no, no one will be able to utilize this. So I want to figure out how to move forward today, and we can continue the discussions and figure out how it works for, um, traditional ag and cannabis together. But, um, you know, I want to make sure that this has been a productive six months, that we don't lose the morale of all of the people that have been helping and all the stakeholders and everyone who's had a hand in this. Um, I, I don't think that, that the 4290 roads throughout the, um, through the hoops are necessary. I think the three-foot, um, in-between the rows is fine. Um, I'm okay with those recommendations that you made, but I do think that we need to move forward. And I'm looking for other comments-
I completely agree, if we could find a solution, move forward, we have been talking this over obviously for years, and it's never challenged. With this whole industry, there's nothing, you know, one thing isn't going to fix everything. We, we do this, there's going to be something else that comes up. But, y- you know, um, obviously Lloyd, y- y- you know, I really be looking to you for a path forward. My thought is, at least for my feelings, and I think I don't want to see this being put on the agricultural community at this point, but being able to help out cannabis for this growth season as we move through the process. Um, so if, you've heard all the discussion, if there's maybe a suggestion or something like that, that we can move something forward, sounds like the cannabis industry obviously really wants to see something happen, and, um, like, see if we can get that done. I, I'd like to not push it off either. Continue all the other conversations, but man, see if we get something done.
Yeah, so what's before the board is the first reading of the ordinance. So, uh, in the first reading, two motions, strictly procedure. Um, and if there are any amendments made to the, uh, ordinance proposed, it could move forward with the first reading as amended under those two, uh, two motions. So it looks like, uh, from where the board is right now, uh, the, uh, section 2A1 and 2A6 have been specifically identified as possible provisions for an amendment. Um, and then there's also, uh, for purposes of the first reading, for, for purposes of the first reading of this ordinance as amended. Um, and you also have that issue of, uh, whether or not there should be specific, uh, reference made to narrowing the scope of this ordinance to apply to, say, only cannabis or, as it stands right now, uh, based on committee development's, uh, uh, presentation and the draft of the ordinance itself, it, it, it is broader than just cannabis as it's currently drafted.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for the comments. Interested in moving forward if we do it right, and I'm not convinced we can do it right today. And I'm not convinced we can do it right if we kick it back to cannabis task force for a cannabis-only iteration of this. Again, we have not taken the big picture. What, what other counties in the state are doing? I did email Director Turner some regulations from Santa Barbara County. Uh, it bears note that those regulations took shape in form both by a lawsuit and by a programmatic EIR that followed that lawsuit. Uh, these are complicated issues, and it is not as simple as some people might say, hey, we're just throwing poles in the ground and hoops up. Again, are we talking about a three-foot for strawberries, are we talking about 20-foot high? Uh, the state regulations, for all the people that want to mirror that, you can grow mixed light cultivation in a hoop house if you run power in it. This current ordinance doesn't allow for hoop house cultivation that would be eligible for mixed light licensing under the state. So I'm really torn. If I were to move at all and support this moving forward, it would be with the draft before us today that does apply to ag generally. I know that is not what was advertised. However, all the comments we've heard saying we absolutely need hoop houses has come from cannabis. I'm not expecting a big rush from, uh, vineyards and pear growers to pop this up. So it's kind of like no harm, no foul, and experience is the best teacher, having an ordinance on the books that can be applied and that we can learn from, and we can come back and amend as needed. Uh, there may be some value in that. But what I really want to do is not kick it back to the task force, what I really want to do is just flush this for the year. The task force already has substantial amount of homework revising the entire cultivation ordinance, the hoop houses could be addressed in that master ordinance. And we do talk about getting granular and changing standards by zoning district, minimum parcel size. If I do read the ag exempt structure thing right, there's a 10-acre minimum, that's not addressed here at all. Uh, and, and, you know, I, I think we have a lot to talk about at the, at the, at the ordinance level, and hoop houses is just the teeniest little fraction of that master ordinance, and all the things we require, property management plans, fire safety plans, all that good stuff. So I don't, you know, I, I understand what the industry wants, I don't know that I'm convinced that the industry needs it, especially in terms of frost protection this late in the spring. Uh, when we take a look at traditional ag and all the questions that have been raised about their frost protection practices and groundwater pumping, um, some hard questions. And the cannabis industry probably could benefit from asking some hard questions of themselves, too. It has traditionally, from its, uh, less-than-legal underpinnings, been resource-intensive. Uh, when we have hoop houses and all that up on the North Coast, it's because land, you know, cannabis cultivation isn't allowed in prime farmland where it's warmer. Um, importation of non-native soil, stuff like that. So, uh, totally support the idea that there's environmental, uh, environmental benefits that comes with putting plants under covers, uh, but a permanent mixed-light structure greenhouse is one thing, uh, popping up hoop houses, uh, for every licensed grow, and then every unlicensed grow in the county starts popping up hoop houses to keep up with the Joneses could potentially create enforcement issues. Um, so, uh, I, I'm open to listening ideas that we, uh, kick it to the task force and bring it cannabis-only, but I just don't think that is getting us where we need to go. If we're going to take a meaningful look at regulating cannabis as we do agriculture generally, um, this draft ordinance doesn't get it there. I don't know that task force can fix it on the cheap, on the fly. Uh, and I would much rather us dive into the bigger issues, if only because with their hoop houses, temporary drying sheds, storage containers, or whatever else we're going to put in that revised ordinance, uh, we're, we're going to be revisiting, uh, the potential impacts on the environment. And, uh, although our original regulatory ordinance was exempt from secret review under the regulations available at the state at the time, if we were to take a fresh run at our cannabis ordinance and what we want in it this time around, I'm not so sure that we should not be looking at it, uh, for some level of environmental review of that ordinance. Uh, so somewhere between an initial study and a programmatic EIR would be the best place to be talking about all of our cannabis cultivation issues. If we're going to be talking about hoop houses, it might be the best place to talk about hoop houses as it pertains to all agricultural practices. Uh, but just slicing and dicing it down to the narrow issue of hoop houses for cannabis this year, no, uh, no, I'm not convinced.
Supervisor Spatier?
Um, I don't think that's fair to, uh, do that to ag when their voice was not voiced for what's in front of us today. Uh, I think that they need to have a, a fair shake at, uh, putting their voice into it, and so to automatically subject them to something they haven't really been, or, this room would be full, it would not just be Ms. Har- Ms. Harper sitting in front. Um, and so I, I don't want to do that. I don't want to put people on their heels, uh, I don't think that's fair. Uh, I do want to, um, if you don't mind, Director Turner, uh, Sonoma County Code, Chapter 7, Section 7-13, C2, um, just might be a, a place to look at to see where we go. Uh, it's all about hoop houses, uh, prefabricated structures, no more than 500 square feet in area, constructed of light frame materials and covered with cloth or flexible plastic, uh, which has a thickness no greater than 5 one thousandths of an inch, accessory to a single-family dwelling with no associated electrical plumbing or mechanical equipment, and the height above grade does not exceed 12 feet. This building permit exemption shall, um, not apply for site-built framework or any method of construction. Uh, it's, it's talking about an exempt, uh, a building exemption, uh, permit type of thing. Um, and I just think that might help us to see, I, I know you've looked at others, but I just want to make sure that we're, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel as well. Um, I think that, uh- I think it's so much more complicated than what we need, but unfortunately, a- and, I, I, I will throw my other comment as well for cannabis. I remember when we did the farmland protection zone, people yelling about being forced to go in a greenh- in a hoop house, and now it's, it's like begging for a hoop house. The industry is changing so fast, we can't change as fast as the, uh, industry is, is asking. Uh, so that part can get a little frustrating that we are back at similar conversations we've had in the past, uh, but with a different reaction from the same industry we're dealing with. Uh, I would like to, again, offer that I'm willing to move forward as long as the conversation continues, um, to look at how we can implement a structure-wide ordinance, uh, again with item one, PVC or similarly weighted tubing. That way it allows different types of material. And item six, uh, where the three feet is between the width of the structures, not between the length of the structure, uh, to give our farmers more flexibility, and that still meets the 75-foot, um, maximum distance between every exit. And I think that's the easiest way to solve some of the issues that we've been told from cannabis. It solves the issue of ag being put in a place that they never asked to be or didn't have a voice at the table to say what they would like to see, as they, uh, believe this was intended for cannabis. Uh, but we need to have a structure ordinance in the long run, not a cannabis structure for hoop houses ordinance, while we still don't have anything that specifically states what ag hoop house structures should look like or do look like, as I don't think the right to farm just means you can build a building, just like that's why we have an ag-exempt structure. Uh, but it does mean that it reduces the, um, inspections and the criterias of what needs to be met in order to have those implements added to the farmland, and I want to make sure that we're not doing it in an overburdened some fashion.
I agree with those changes, we have not heard from Supervisor Crandall.
I think for me, I mean, I've seen a lot of the, uh, different verbiage changes, um, in regard to the ordinance, and I know some of them came from constituents in my district, and, um, I know it's not in tune with what was worked on throughout the ad hoc committee, of course. But I think the bottom line for me is I know that there's more asks, of course, um, with what I just mentioned. However, the bottom line is, is this, the, the industry needs to do something to be able to grow this year. B, we have programs that depend on the cannabis, uh, taxes. So I mean, we have to give them an opportunity to move forward, um, somehow, and, um, I feel like if we don't move forward, and we kick it back, or whatever the case may be, I mean- and hinder other groups like ag, that it's not fair to them either. But I think if we can accommodate for what Supervisor Sabatier said, with specifics being considered later, I think we get to that point. And I just know the bottom line is this, they need to be able to grow this year. And they need that opportunity to see if this moves forward with the taxes next year. You know, we've already pushed them back once or twice because of the industry's hurting in that capacity. And I don't see cutting, limiting it even more to basically just kind of funnel them to a position where they're just going to not be successful. I don't know if that makes sense. But bottom line for me is, we've got a lot of comments from people that wanted to see more into this ordinance. I think they were heard, but I think there needs to be a well-balanced path forward, and I'm willing to do that as well.
Okay, is there going to be action?
If I could just clarify to make sure I understand. First of all, I serve at the pleasure of the board. Do you guys want me to toss this out, start over? We toss it out, start it over, but I'm very glad that everybody's motivated to move forward because it has been definitely an effort from all members of the cannabis task force, the ag advisory board, the planning commission, and now multiple hearings before you. So if I understand correctly, the board is amenable to the ordinance as presented today with two further amendments. One is three feet between rows that is alongside and at either end. And then secondly, PVC material or a material of similar weight. Are there any other changes that I might have missed? Three, I don't know.
What?
So there was just the two changes, the weights and the width, the three feet between the width of the structure.
Three feet between, so that's all along the structure, correct?
No, just on the, in the length part, if we can bring them together, as long as you have this three-foot section and three-foot section, then you have
Oh, so they can actually be attached or be standing right next to each other?
That's
So zero between them, three feet along the rows that go on either end, in between the
In between the 100 feet?
Yeah, yeah.
That way, there's still access and there's still the three feet.
Got it.
How are we going to comply with the fire code that requires 150 feet from a fire access road to any exterior portion of the structure?
Then you use something like what the code for Sonoma County that says that there's no need for separation in between, and I forget where I was reading this, but that the, what did they call it, the groups of hoop houses can't exceed a certain square footage. That way, automatically, you know that if you have three and that's it, that 20 times 3 is 60 feet, you can reach. 20 times 4 is 80 feet, you can reach.
And you know, and as you mentioned, there at 500, we're at 2,000, so we're already at four times the size. So we're already at four of theirs in a block for one of the, because we're at 20 by 100, 2,000 square feet. So we're already at four of their 500 or 600 square feet hoop houses you had mentioned into one, because that was allowing them more propagation room without having the setbacks.
So here it says separation distance between temporary membrane structures is not required where the aggregate floor area does not exceed 15,000 square feet and the structures are not used for cooking, so on and so forth. So that's why I think we should be looking at things like that to help us.
And I think 15,000 square feet, I don't think you would be, I don't think you would be within 150 foot of the inside of that structure.
The problem is
I just don't know
Until about a week ago
Just wave a fire code.
Up until about a week ago, anyone outside of the world of cannabis would have been able to put up a hoop house. And I don't know that anyone has ever gotten a violation for a hoop house. So somehow or another, that was allowed, or maybe it was never allowed and we just didn't know and we didn't do anything. I don't know. But until about a week ago, it was never an issue until we started speaking about this. And again, the safety for somebody growing a cannabis plant under a hoop house versus the safety of somebody growing a carrot in a hoop house, I see no difference. It's a hoop house. And for some reason, we've been here since who knows when with hoop houses, and that's never been a subject to breach. And again, I don't want to create anything for ag without them voicing their opinions on how it would impact their world. But it just, we are complicating something when less than a week ago, it was not complicated at all.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I may assist with, at least with the difference between what's presented here today and the Sonoma code. The Sonoma code is based on a different building code section that addresses temporary membrane structures, and that's what their permit permits. And the code, the building code section that relates to the temporary membrane structures has a different criteria than the code section that is relied on for the ordinance presented to you today. And the ordinance presented to you today relates on an exemption from the building code section under Title 24, Part 2, Section 105.2, Parenthetical 10. There's a list of exemptions there. The 10th one in that list is the exemption that's relied on for today's ordinance. And so the criteria that have been attached to that are based on that code section and not the membrane code section. Thank you.
And just if I may add, so, you know, procedurally, if this ordinance passes, that doesn't necessarily negate any possible incorporation of those Sonoma code sections if it complements the ordinance that's being presented before the board today, if it passes, or passes first reading at least. So as Johnson mentioned, the temporary membrane structures that the Sonoma code is relying on, there may be a way to somehow incorporate some of those sections in a way that would complement the provisions that's currently before the board by way of this ordinance, proposed ordinance.
Were you looking also through 11 through 14? You said that can be, that those additions would be not implemented in this, or your recommendation was that?
No, 11 through 14, I'm fine with. The only, the only two out of the whole thing that I wanted to change was 1 and 6. Everything else, I don't disagree with those things currently as applied to cannabis.
Supervisor Green.
I believe that staff will need clarification. Again, when they bring it back, it's going to be limited to commercial cannabis. Or are we kicking it back task force with direction, we're going to continue to plow down the road, this applies to ag generally? So that's an important, important point.
As I stated, if it goes back to eventually have a structure policy that covers anybody that uses that structure, I'm fine with continuing forward with a kind of a split so that we can at least move forward. If there is no intention to go back and do a structure for whoever uses that structure, then I feel we are continuing the systemic issue that we have continuously dealt with for the last four years.
Okay. So do we have consensus for staff to continue to work on this in parallel? We pass this today?
My answer, that would be yes.
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 I don't understand the parallel instruction. Are we kicking it back the cannabis task force to fix this with cannabis-specific language?
No, we're going to pass this today, but we're also going to keep working on it.
I want to say this is the specific cannabis language.
As presented today, that applies to ag generally.
Yeah, that was my comments earlier, that the only way to move forward without it affecting ag would be to change our current document that's been presented to us today, correct?
To say that it's for cannabis only.
Yes.
And that's hence kicking it back to also say, while we approve this, continue the conversation where eventually there is a hoop house ordinance without the specific of what it is that you're growing in the hoop house.
Additionally, this is an option to be exempt from a building permit. All structures over 120 square feet require a building permit. That includes hoop houses. There is a misconception out there that, thank you Supervisor Sabatier, brought to my attention yesterday, that hoop houses do not require building permits. That is an error. There was an in-house draft of a memo that was mistakenly released to the public as though it had already gone into effect. That was not accurate. All structures over 120 square feet require a building permit. So what you are considering today is allowing an option for an agricultural activity of a temporary hoop structure to be exempt from a building permit requirement should it satisfy the design and development standards that are in the ordinance. So all other structures that may not meet this would then be required to, or would have the opportunity to then go ahead and get a building permit. Hope that helps. We're not, we're not putting regulations on agriculture in general. We're offering a way for the already existing regulations to be exempted under these certain design and development standards for those who would like to apply. But they don't have to. They could still go through the building permit process.
You got five minutes.
What?
You got five minutes.
I have five minutes?
For a break.
Oh, you want to take a break?
Yeah, my iced tea is
Okay. We're going to take a five-minute break. Come back at 3:16. Come back. We were in the midst of deliberation here. Who wants to go? Supervisor Sabatier.
This is messy. And because it's messy, and I am, I don't even know how to express my thoughts right now, other than I just don't see any other way than to ask to please come back with something that, we're all kind of all over the place. And I feel like we're pushing something forward that is not going to work. My thoughts are, we can't make some of the changes we're trying to make. I mean, we have the building officials saying, how are we going to do this? And I just think that fixing it on the fly today here on this dais is probably not the best way for us to get to the right answer. I know there's some that really want something today. But I'm starting to lean into the idea of let's, you know, what's been said, coming back. I don't know. I just
Yeah, but what we asked for last week was for the surety bond language to be put in.
Yeah.
Wasn't that big of a change?
If the board would like to direct staff to return, that would be fine. I just would request clarity on what would be better. What sort of amendments or areas shall we look for bringing it back to you? So far, I've got the three-foot rows and PVC or material of similar weight.
And cannabis-specific.
And cannabis-specific.
And we can't make those three changes today?
Those would all be changes on the surface of the ordinance. I'm under the understanding that that would still count, that we could do a first reading today as amended.
A quick question, if that was the direction. If it was cannabis-specific, and this may be for county council as well, would we be looking to add 6.25 to Chapter 5? Or would we be looking to add those same things probably to Article 27 as a performance standard?
Since this is an option for an exempt building permit for agriculture, I would recommend keeping it in 6.25. I originally took a look at putting it in Article 27 under a zoning permit, which is ministerial, but would allow planning to review all the criteria. But I think that that would be more cumbersome. This seems simpler since it lists all the criteria right there. And so they would just be applying for an ag-exempt building permit specific to hoop houses. So it, I think this would be the more streamlined way to go. Additionally, making the ordinance specific to cannabis is consistent with the spirit in which the process has gone through, both at the task force, the ag advisory board, and the planning commission. And that is because when we were dealing with this entire conversation or the entire resolution of intent, it was just assumed in our discussion that this was to help the cannabis industry. And so all of our conversations have taken place in the context of assisting the legal-permitted cannabis industry.
Yes, I agree with that. Well, I'm okay making those three changes. If anyone else is, you want to, yes.
Request a motion, I do.
A question for the building official. Mr. Collins, you mentioned a fire code. And so can you provide an idea of how many of these hoop houses should be in a group? So that maybe we can add that in there so that it's not 50 hoop houses connected together? If we are changing the three-foot for, between the length, if it's 2,000 and there's six of them, is that a maximum?
Can you give me just a second, draw a little picture here, and I'll do my best.
I'm just trying to help comply with what you're bringing up because I don't want to ignore those things either. I don't want to create something that puts us in a position where we're kind of contradicting maybe state code, as you mentioned, is where I think in the fire code that you spoke of. And I just, I think that if that's possible for us to get a better number so that we can at least meet that, I think that would be an appropriate thing.
And the confusing part is going to be if they change, you know, I can figure it out what it's going to be for the maximum size, a, you know, 100 by 200, 2,000 square foot structure. But if they shrink it down now, it's, you know, now they might be able to get more in there because obviously they're not going to have the same-sized box.
New paper, new math.
Give me, just give me a couple minutes, I'll do my best here real quick.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
If the board is considering, you know, proceeding with a first reading of this as amended, I do know, I do note that Community Development had a couple of amendments
Yes.
to that ordinance and wanted, and perhaps some clarification while we're waiting.
Yes, do you, your small amendments that you had, that you spoke of in the very beginning. Yes.
We looked through my extremely well-organized pile. Other items of interest, the demolition permit is required at the same time as the exempt agricultural structure permit. That's to ensure removal of the structures within 180 days. Staff report, Appendix C, that was an error, we're working on it.
What's the difference between what's on B?
What's on B?
Because it says concurrently with the exempt ag building permit application, the applicant shall submit a demolition permit application for removal of temp house structure in a later than 180 days.
Right, I just wanted to point that out to you.
Okay, so it's not a change to the document?
Correct, yeah, yeah. Then, one, okay, so that one is, we've already talked about regarding the fire roads. Then the other one is recommended amendment at 6.25.1. C. This is specifying that this permit for the hoop houses would be appropriate within an already-approved cultivation area. Again, that's not canopy area. Again, that's not canopy area, but it's the larger vetted cultivation area. I think that's about it. There was additional just housekeeping or cleanup wording in, to clarify some of the CEQA exemptions. It's under a Class 4, and so, but that isn't really anything you've been discussing. And the surety bonds.
And just real quickly on that, so the title, when it comes back, will have to change. And then there are multiple references using temporary hoop structures, and it may be, in this iteration, it's horticulture, but it's going to go back to what it was last week, cannabis cultivation. So just pointing out the title, and then all subsequent references, where currently it says today, horticulture and crop protection will be cannabis cultivation, just so we don't miss any of those next week.
And then while Mr. Collins is continuing to do his part, just want to check in, just because we've opened a can of worms. I want to make sure that our ag, our traditional ag, is not on a radar or on a target to, with the conversation saying, if anything's over 120 square feet, you need a permit, and if we don't pass this, then you're going to have to get a building permit. I just want to make sure that they're, they remain in the gray area until we can come back and say, this is what we're looking at, because I don't want to, again, put them on their heels or surprise them and create burdens at this moment in time.
There should not be any surprise that the California Building Code requires a building permit for anything over 120 square feet for any use. As we receive reports for hoop houses that go up around the county, we do refer those complaints over to code enforcement for proper enforcement, because we have to verify that there was building permits for those structures, just as we would with any, any structure that we get a complaint on that possibly being built without permits that would require it. And so code enforcement is already moving on a complaint we received recently.
Okay, do you have it?
And I'll give a little quick heads-up on that, too, as well. So even like those membrane-covered garage things you buy at Home Depot and stuff, and come home and put it out in the front yard, those require a building permit as well, just so we're clear. It's not just the hoop house structure, because it's cannabis. It's any structure that size, it's a membrane-covered structure, so it's not exempted from a building permit. So I just want to give you a clarification on that.
Good to know.
Yeah. So if any of you guys have any of those, make sure you come see me. So I brought up the code section two. Just to be clear, I believe that the route is supposed to be in 150 feet anywhere on the exterior of the building. I'll read the code section. 503.1.1 of the California Fire Code, Buildings and Facilities, Approved Fire Apparatus Access Roads Shall Be Provided For Every Facility, Building, Or Portion of Building Hereafter Constructed, Or Moved Into, Or Within the Jurisdiction. The Fire Apparatus Access Roads Shall Comply With the Requirements of this Section and Shall Extend To Within 150 Feet Of All Portions Of the Facility, And All Portions Of the Exterior Walls Of the First Story Of the Building As Measured By An Approved Route Around the Exterior Of the Building Or Facility. So if, in my opinion, as the building official, if you have a box there, and it's got that, you know, if you stack some together, there's no way to get between them. So there's not a, I made a little picture here, this is what I believe you're talking about, if I may be correct, Bruno, or Supervisor Sabatier, so there would be no separation here, and you just have that little road there. So obviously, we wouldn't have any access to these exterior walls here, which it talks about, 150 feet to all exterior walls, measured around the outside. You know, I guess we could possibly look into this one whole thing being a structure, but I would think you would need access through there, because, you know, if they come inside with the hose, they would be able to get in there with that as well. I don't know if they would fight it that way. I'm not a, well, I'm the fire marshal here, I never go out and fight a fire, so I'm not...
Turn it that way, so they can see too.
This is what I showed everybody. So this is what I believe Supervisor Sabatier was mentioning, and his recommendation was, the 100-foot sides would be connected, and there would be a 20-foot, then the path would come down the center here. My concern about that is, I don't have 150-foot access to the exterior of this structure.
So I have a question. I have a question.
Can we put the mic?
Can I ask a question about?
Oh, sorry.
Are we opening up public input again?
I just want to ask a question about the...
Okay, just go to the microphone. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. My question is, even if those are lumped together, right, since they don't have a complete wall, it's poles in the ground, and then plant matter, wouldn't you, this is not a question for argumentative purposes, it's purely education.
I'll put a way to try to think about it.
Wouldn't you still be able to get through, right? Like, there's not walled structures against each other, it's poles in the ground, and then plant matter. The plants aren't going to be planted on one another, because they need to receive sunlight, and yada, yada, yada. So would you, wouldn't you still be able to get through, even if they were up against each other?
I believe that would require an approved fire access, like a door. I don't think, I don't think you could, you could put stuff in front of it, like plant matter and things like that, I think.
No, no, I mean, like, the plant matter that's there because of the crop.
Yes, and I believe that would be separating it.
Huh, okay. I'm just, I'm just curious about the door, if there's no way to...
A full-size man door that would go through there, if they were going to be connected and be one, one structure.
Got it.
You could technically, like, weasel through?
Yeah.
But we're talking about the doors.
Yeah, because...
Fire, yeah, approved doors.
Like a reinforced door frame, question mark?
Well, I'm thinking more if it's, if you're going to combine them all together, the problem, the one thing is, now we got to talk about, now we have a bigger building, are we okay with that? I was trying to limit the building size, because now, the same thing, I'm trying to get fire personnel to you as quickly as possible. The more you're stacking together, the harder it is to get people outside. That is my main hang-up with stacking them very close together.
Close to 2,000 square feet.
Yeah, and that's why we went with the 2,000 square feet. And now, so I guess you could go with something like this, and you would still have 150 feet here, you know, you could, so I guess you could actually stack a couple more, and you could still get 150 feet around the outside, you know, you could get 150 feet here, so it could be, what, it'd be a 75, a 75, but the issue is, how do I protect these walls here if I'm the fire guy? And now I have this big five, or six, or 10,000-square-foot building, 100 by 100, which would be five of those hoop houses in a row, would be 10,000 square feet, with a lot of plant matter in the way, and we're trying to find somebody in there that's injured or that we need to get out of there, well, fire would be.
Quick question.
The fire chief didn't make an appearance today, but I can let you know that I was on the phone with him this morning, and they're not very, they're not on board with what, with the lower separation.
Oh, Supervisor Green.
Yeah, just to clarify terms, because I know the interpretation is 120 square foot, all of a sudden the building permits are flying. But two terms you just used from the fire code section you cited, building and facility, that's not interchangeable with structure, or is it? Because this goes back to our whole history of this. Yes, I suppose in some sense, a hoop house is a structure, generally speaking, but again, a three-foot hoop house and a 20-foot hoop house that has lighting attached and fixed frame is a different thing. So when we use these terms interchangeably, structure, building, facility, and we're citing the specific fire codes, and then trying to interject whatever wisdom the fire code adds to our understanding of planning codes and other things that may apply to buildings and structures and the facilities, again, I have to be very specific, because those terms have to be defined in the building code. If we're not using them precisely, we're probably shooting ourselves in the foot. And to the issue at hand, again, the never-ending debate over 4290 fire standards, you know, a structure and a facility and a building, to my mind, are not analogous terms, even if we bounce them about that way in casual conversation or hearings like this. So I don't need an answer to that, but we're bringing the ordinance back anyway. But as you're slicing and dicing building standards and fire codes, again, I just want to highlight the fact that a low-lying strawberry hoop house and a 20-foot thing with lighting attached, permissible under state law and not permissible under this iteration of the ordinance, two very different things, and three different things, maybe, so.
And all, I have no issue with low crop covers. If it's going to be, you know, two, three off the ground, two, three, four feet off the ground, I have no issue with that. I kind of like what Bruno had mentioned this morning, Supervisor Sabatier, had mentioned a little while ago about, you know, maybe if it's not high enough for headroom, or five feet or less, we don't have an issue, because now we don't have people in there. That's the main safety thing of the building code, is getting people in, getting fire personnel in, getting people out. I do have a definition of building from the fire code, if you'd like me to read it. Where were you earlier?
We could save it.
Okay. And I mentioned structures, so.
Okay. Floyd?
So procedurally, the amendment option is still there. It would have to be amended quite specifically in terms of the provisions, in order to move forward, in order to proceed with the second reading of the ordinance. The other option, of course, is if the issues that have been discussed need to be fleshed out some more, the other option is to continue, by motion, continue the ordinance to be continued at a specific date and time, so that more of these, these issues can be discussed further for a possible presentation of the board at a later point in time, specified date and time, under the continuance.
Of everything that we've talked about, what, which, can you remind me which part of it would need to come back as an amendment?
I believe, right now, based on the most recent discussion, it would be Section 6, Section 2.6 of the ordinance, which has drafted, as presently drafted, it states, multiple structures have a three-foot minimum fire separation distance between structures, and initially, at the beginning of this item, Community Development had also some, an additional clause to be provided to that, which led to further discussion.
Supervisor Sabatier.
I got to take you up on that offer. It's no longer a structure if it's less than four feet, five feet?
Oh, yes. What I would, and...
Because I mean, if we can add that in there, then that would simplify for those that are doing auto flower, those that are just trying to get some starters going, and then they take it off, and nobody has a problem.
And I think, and in my opinion, I would say that the building code specifically exempts those type of crop covers. We've tried to, we're trying to expand that and say, well, this is how we're going to interpret this a little bit, to try and make it for larger crop covers, hoop houses, so they can get a bigger hoop house and it'll work for people that have these. And with the idea of, hey, this is the, this is a pre-designed thing, and it's safe, and we're not going to have any issues with it. But I think specifically the smaller crop covers are exactly what the, what is specified in the code, when it says shade cloth structures constructed for nursery or agricultural purposes, not included service systems. I believe that is exactly what they're talking about, is little crop covers going over strawberries, somebody's garden outside, something like that. Now, the code allows me to, I got another section over here that allows me to, where is it here? The building official is hereby authorized and directed to enforce the provisions of this code. The building officials shall have the authority to render interpretations of the code and call it, adopt policies and procedures in order to clarify the application of its provisions. So basically, we were, we were trying to come up with a design that was, we feel is safe to where we could get you guys, get the cannabis industry a hoop house with little resistance. They don't have to come see me, they don't have to pay a fee if they comply with this safe design. I think it exceeds this number 10, just on, I don't think you can just take this number 10 and say it applies to any hoop house, because they're talking, in my opinion, about something, like we said, that's not meant for people to be inside of. Now, I think I have the ability, per the code, to say, well, my judgment is that this, this little bit bigger hoop house, we would accept, but, you know, it would need to comply with this. But if we set anything under five feet, I have no problem with that.
So we have a minimum of five feet and a maximum of 12 feet?
Yes, yes. And anything under five feet, I think would just be, is there's no permit, you wouldn't even need to come see us.
I think that's the conversation we should have started with earlier. That would have been awesome. Could we add that as just item number 15? If hoop house is less than five feet tall, it is exempt from this building structure permit?
The building official would be good with that.
I like the building official now.
I still prefer the, I still don't, not too keen on reducing that extra three-foot of fire separation, just so everybody understands my position and my stance.
I would actually go to where you are on that stand, if we make that change, then anything under five feet does not require anything at this moment in time. And again, at this moment in time, without the conversation of bringing in ag, I would say, at this moment, it's still specific to cannabis, with the continuation conversation on how do we get there to make sure everybody can have access to these types of structures.
Instead of adding it as a number 13, I would actually place it in the beginning sentence under 6.25, where it says, an exempt agricultural building permit, blah, 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 may be issued. I'd start with a description.
Greater than five feet.
Yeah, yeah. Hoop structure less than five feet is exempt per this, and then put the Title 24, Part 2 code citation there. For structures over five feet in height, the following would apply. Rather than stick it down in the meat of it, let's just put it right up front, so people know ahead of time.
Floyd?
Just as a point of clarification, that would be five feet in height?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. So amendments can be made, and we can proceed, if the board wishes to do so, with the first reading of the ordinance as amended. Would need to be specifically identified as to where the amendments would take place, so we could give it a shot, to see if this can proceed further onto a second reading, if the board wishes to do so.
Supervisor Green?
I think the better mousetrap would be continue to a date and time center, certain, and I would look to staff for recommending that date and time. There's lots of little things to bring back, and we want to make sure everyone's reading from the same playbook and has the opportunity to read it. So we want them to do their best homework. So I know it's another week, but another week is just another week. So what are we looking at next week? And do we have anything on the calendar that would allow for a continuation?
No.
No?
We don't. And I'm sorry, but we don't, if we don't do this today, it's probably not going to come back until June, because of what our calendars are, and we've got traveling people. I mean, CAO Parker, would you agree?
I would agree. I'm just looking at it right now.
It's a monster of a month.
And the board has five evaluations on it.
Interviews.
Interviews, sorry, interviews.
Yeah, next Tuesday is not going to be possible, then you're traveling, then you're traveling. So let's...
As long as we're, can we get a review of what we're changing?
Yeah, let's review everything.
That way I can say yes.
So if I understand correctly, the board would approve a first reading entitled only with the following amendments.
Okay.
Specification in 6.2, subsection 6.25, that this permit applies only to hoop structures greater than five feet in height. In various sections of the ordinance, I'm sorry, I can't really narrow it down further than that, it would specify that this applies to cannabis permits. On section... So 6.25.2A1, the structure is made entirely of PVC or similar, or material of similar weight tubing, and a maximum of 10 mil plastic or shade cloth. And then, it sounds like it's still, section, amendment, no amendment to 6.25.2, number six, no recommended amendment adding the clause with the maximum distance from any exterior portion of the structure being no more than 150 feet from a compliant fire access road. Is that correct? That is not to be added?
Say that again?
Yeah, okay. So, so I am just asking for clarification on the section regarding the three-foot minimum fire separation distance between structures, that the board wants to approve it without further amendments, which would be adding in the reference of the requirement of the fire code. That is not included, or...
Not this. Not with this, right?
Correct. If it just, if the, if there's no amendment, it will read as, multiple structures have a three-foot minimum fire separation distance between structures.
And so we're not adding?
Correct.
Yes, yes, correct.
That concludes my listed amendments. I could get everything specifically, except where it's going to refer to cannabis permits only, but I can tell you it's going to be in the title, it's going to be in subsection 6.25 title, it will also be referenced, actually, that's pretty much going to start me off, and then if there's anything else that needs to be, I can hear clicks from county council, so I'm going to defer to them.
So on the references to cannabis cultivation, I may have some specific lines, amendments to that, starting with the title, under line four on the title, where it's, it would read an ordinance amending Chapter 5, Section 6 of the Lake County Code, adding Section 6.25 relating to permitting temporary hoop structures for cannabis cultivation. That's what it would read. Further downwards, around from lines eight through nine of that same page, on the second whereas, it would, it would state, whereas the board of supervisors decide to add, desires to add Section 6.25 to Chapter 5 of the Lake County Ordinance to allow for permitting of temporary hoop structures for cannabis cultivation. That's how it would read. And then further down on the fourth whereas, around lines 11 through 13, it would read, whereas the 2022 California Building Code, Title 24, Part 2, Section 105.210, allows for exemption from, from permit requirements for shade cloth structures constructed for cannabis cultivation, not including service systems.
I would request this not be amended, since it's wording straight out of the code. The, the code allows for exemption from permit requirements for shade, and this is a direct quote, shade cloth structures constructed for nursery or agricultural purposes, not including service systems. I would defer, of course, to county council, but that's why that wording is that way.
And that is fine. So further down on the same page, around lines 22, around lines 23, where it cites, in quotes, 6.25 temporary hoop structures for cannabis cultivation, that would be the amendment. And then the next line, lines 24, 25 of that same page, under that same quote, would state, an exempt agricultural building permit for temporary hoop structures for cannabis cultivation may be issued with the approval of the Agricultural Commissioner and Community Development Director, and subject to the following requirements. That would be the amendment to that portion. And leave, on the second page, under sub C, so it would be 6.25.1(c), it would be amended to read, in addition to those conducting agricultural operations, applicants with an approved cannabis cultivation permit from the County of Lake are eligible to apply for an exempt agricultural building permit for temporary hoop structures for cannabis cultivation within the approved cultivation plan. And then sub E on that same page, lines 13 through 16, it would read, an applicant applying for an exempt agricultural building permit for temporary hoop structures, as described in this section, is responsible for obtaining any other necessary state and/or county permits, and complying with all requirements of such permits, including but not limited to any local fire district permitting requirements for temporary structures. Moving on to sub F, would state, an applicant applying for an exempt agricultural building permit for temporary hoop structures, as described in this section, shall obtain and provide to the Community Development Director proof of a current surety bond prior to issuance of permit. And those are all the amendments that we spotted consistent with the discussion today.
Line 24 on page two.
Yes, that's correct. So section 6.25.2A, it should be amended to state, an exempt agricultural building permit shall be issued if all of the following requirements are met.
Okay. Supervisor Green, did you have something else?
Nope.
Okay. Action?
Have we killed this one yet?
Sausage! We made sausage today. Who is going to?
I'll do it. Let me try. I'll move. That the board approves a first reading of this ordinance as amended and advance the draft ordinance as amended to the next board meeting, but that would be first reading at the next meeting, right? Because of the substantial amendments, okay.
Right, and there would be, I would, the board may want to consider doing two separate motions, the motion to approve the first reading, and to, as amended, to be read in title only, and then the clerk of the board would read the title, and then the second motion would be to move, approve the draft ordinance as amended to be advanced at the next board of supervisors meeting for consideration of possible adoption. So going back to the first motion, it would be a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance as amended to be read in title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's hear it, Donna.
Further would move to advance the draft.
I got it. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 5, Section 6 of the Lake County Code, adding Section 6.25 relating to permitting temporary hoop structures for cannabis cultivation.
Then the second motion would be to approve the draft ordinance as amended, be, no, motion to approve the draft ordinance as amended, be advanced to the next board of supervisors meeting for consideration and possible adoption. And the date has to be more than five dates from today, so next Tuesday would be, would fit that criteria.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And so for clarification, there would be, there needs to be an identified date and time, so the day would be May 9, and the time would be?
9:30.
Why does it have to be a time? Oh, is it a public hearing? I thought second ordinances, most of the time, our second readings are on consent. I don't want to talk about it again.
Consent.
And so I think on the motion, we are?
What? Amended to May 9?
Yeah, so moved as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for the months and months of work on this, and for following along through these sessions. We are finished with our open session items, we'll be moving into closed session. We have item 9.1, public employee evaluation, from our health services director, so we will be moving into that. Thank you for joining us.